Hello, good evening. Welcome to our Tuesday evening workshop. We have Dr. Roy with us to talk about the capital improvement plan. Please kick us off, Director Roy.
So this is a brief summary. You received your books tonight, so you'll have more of a chance to review them. So we're going to talk about the proposed fiscal year 26 capital program. In your books, you'll see fiscal year 26 to fiscal year 30, five-year capital plan. There's proposed $254 million in projects, $219 million from city resources. The proposed use of local sources, as you can see, the areas of city bond issue for fiscal year 26 were requesting $10 million nine. School bond issues were requesting 3.9 million. Water bond issue, 2.8. Sewer bond issue, 2.5. And stormwater bond issue, 1.8. For the full fiscal year, for the full five fiscal years, we're requesting 218 million The next table shows you the proposed bond issues and the years. So again, going over those, those bond issues, those that I just went over is 21 million 916, 230 for fiscal year 26. And total for the five years is 209 million 221 949. The outstanding debt issue as of 12/31/2024 currently, the city has 48 million 704 227. The school has 63 million 489 997. And you'll see the little asterisk at the bottom, $32,885, $711 is reimbursed by the state. So out of that portion of 63 million 4, 32 million 8 is reimbursed by the state. The water has 20 million 884,0674. Sewer has 18 million 966 68. Stormwater has 13 million 350 760. And the authorized unissue, these are the bonds that you have authorized from prior years that have yet to be issued for 48 million 739. Debt service as a percentage for fiscal year 25 operating budget, city was 14.7%. School is 8.5%, a total of 10.6. The next slide shows you by year, the outstanding general fund debt only. As you can see, in 2025, 2005, we leave that out there to show you the difference that it was at a high amount, that we had outstanding principal and outstanding interest, and we brought that down over the years. Our debt management is to lower the debt, we authorize the limit to 80%, council. We look at refinancing debt when possible. We move recurrent expenditures into the operating budget, and we use unallocated fund balance after requirements are met for one time only. So future year debt services required, this is of course, city general fund only. School is not included in these numbers. Our current principal and interest is 5 million 7. And 26 is 6.1 million. 27 is 5.4 million. 28 is 4.8 million. 29 is 4.3 million. And fiscal year 30 is 3.9 million. So the next couple of slides are the projects that you're going to see in your summary on page 10. It's just an overview of the ones for fiscal year 26. Listed out, the red is what we're requesting bond. And anything that is in black, we're requesting either by fund balance or out of operating. I don't know if you want me to go through all of the projects or just touch on them briefly?
Perhaps just touch on them briefly.
Okay. So I'll go over the larger ones. Emergency 911, this is for them to outfit Park Street because they will be moving into Park Street. So this is to outfit and get that area, that facility up to speed for what they are required. The next larger one is ladder one replacement for a million eight. We receive, if you pay in full, because a lot of the times now with order and fire trucks, if you pay in full, you get a considerable amount in savings, and I believe it's close to like almost 40,000. So the chief is looking at putting that in for this current fiscal year 26. The next largest one, of course, was on the LCIP last year and got pushed to the next year. Public works, vehicle and equipment wash for a million two. And then streets and maintenance at a million dollars. And then we have a couple of smaller ones. And then school education, they're requesting a million dollars for educational space for growing enrollments. And for Franklin pasture tennis courts, a million five. That is to, that would be half city, half school. And then for sewer, the old sanitary sewer maintenance and manholes to be replaced, a million two is another larger project. And then the water main replacement at 2.4. So those are the larger product, projects that you'll see in your book for this year. Our debt limit calculations for the 80% is $6,457,000. With what we're planning for LCIP, we are going to be 8.3 million over, the 80% rule. So this is just showing you another way. So the proposed bonds, 14.8 million. The 80% rule is 6.4, so we'll be over by 8.3.
That's on page 132 in your book, that slide she just showed you.
So the next slide is just a couple of dates. Of course, February 4th is the LCIP public hearing. February 10th, on or before that date, the finance committee and the planning board will recommend to you as city council, what they see as projects that they would like to see. February 18th, the city council is scheduled to adopt the LCIP. And March 1st required charters the adoption date. So when you're adopting the five-year plan, it's not saying that this is a definite of what has to be bonded. That is the process when we go through the bond, I mean, the budget. So this is just approving the five-year plan. And that is it. Any questions?
Yes, any questions from the council? Counselor Chidham, yes.
I had a question. Give me a moment, please, and someone else may speak. I've got to go back to the page that generated that question.
We will.
I have a lot of questions, but I don't know, I don't know if I'm going to be able to word them correctly here. In the past, we've seen on some of the projects, a numbering of order of importance by staff, and I'm wondering if that's in here? Is that part of the LCIP or is that the regular general budget?
No, that was the new program and services that we would, we would rank for you during the budget season.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Chidham, are you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the question was on page four, the outstanding debt, the 214 million. Does that include the 32 that's being reimbursed or not? I could have added the numbers up, but.
Yes, it does.
Busy looking for the page.
So due to the fact that we have to bond it and then the state reimburses us, we have to consider it outstanding debt. So it is in that total, and that's why that note's put down below, so you are aware that that will be reimbursed by the state.
Okay, so we're looking at 180 million, more or less, that is coming right out of our pockets.
Correct.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. We look forward to diving into this deeper, a future date. Yes, Counselor Nagin.
I just had a quick question on, so we have the 80% rule in order to reduce our overall borrowing. But this, a lot of times funds one-time, well, capital improvement projects that are on the books. So I'm wondering if we could also just have a running account for what our overall general budget is, what percentage of the LCIP that, you know what I'm saying on that? So basically, like if our general budget is 32 million, and we're looking at borrowing 10 million, right, that would be roughly 30% of the overall budget, right? Just as kind of a moving number, because I know that as we've reduced our borrowing, it's become harder and harder to hit that 80% rule. And so it's just a question about like how much of our funding is based on bonded and borrowing versus the regular budget. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. For the public, we sound loud. We have new microphones, and we're trying to figure out the right distance to be away when we speak. I would really propose this to the council. Past one, we had zillions of questions. We kept going over and over again. I would suggest we send questions to the director. She can respond to all of us, so we can be time-conscious at our meetings. Many of the meetings, we just ran around in circles when she could have took her with a simple question. So as you go through the budget, I would ask, take your time, but ask her questions so she can respond, so maybe we can keep things time consistently as we move forward. I just don't like to keep running around and answer the same questions three meetings in a row. Thank you.
So I would suggest to just send to myself and Brian, so that both of us have it.
Thank you very much, Director Roy. Director Libby, thank you for being here. Please kick us off.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Nate Libby. I am Director of Economic and Community Development. I'm here tonight to help us walk through hopefully some decisions on how we'd like to proceed with the New England Clean Energy Connect TIF. This is more for our viewers at home, but the New England Clean Energy Connect project, also known as the CMP corridor, is a project that is estimated to be valued at about $340 million when it's completed in the next 18 months. It's a converter station, and so it takes DC power that's generated by Canadian hydropower dams and brings it down to Lewiston where it's converted into AC. And then from there, it's pumped into the New England grid. The project is currently valued at about 186 and a half million dollars. When we get to April 1 coming up this year, we expect another 76 or 77 million of value to be added to that number. And then the following year, another 77 million added to that. So that's how we get to 340 million. It's important to note that the project is currently generating property tax revenue, and that property tax revenue is supporting your general fund budget. So a lot of those expenses, like police and fire and schools, are being supported by this project now, and that's helping the local property taxpayer. What we're talking about is taking a chunk of that future valuation and sheltering it to get some of the benefits of TIF. I know for many years, we've talked about TIF as that reimbursement to developers, that tax break, but I'm hoping we can try to change some of our verbiage to be a bit more consistent. TIF is a powerful tool for economic development and for sheltering value and for maximizing revenues from the state. What, when we're talking about a tax break to a developer, that's called a credit enhancement agreement. Credit enhancement agreement. That's that reduction in taxes to a developer to help them offset some of their costs of developing big expensive projects. For what we're talking about tonight, there is no credit enhancement agreement on the table. CMP and the Clean Energy Connect folks haven't asked for one. We're not proposing we give them one. What we're talking about tonight with TIFs is really that sheltering benefit and how we want to use those funds for economic development, and how we want to perhaps take some of the burden off the general fund in doing that. This slide is a timeline of the next several weeks, the steps we have to take in order to ensure we get an application filed with the state by March 1st. So tonight, obviously, we're conducting workshop number three. I've noted, I'm, hopefully, we can make a decision point on how much to shelter and roughly how we would like to use those funds. From there, I and my staff can work on getting the paperwork ready for you on January 21st, which is two weeks from today, where we take some initial votes. You'd conduct a public hearing, you'd adopt a development program, and you'd authorize the city administrator to submit an application. And then from that January 21st meeting, we'll work on getting everything prepared. We want it to be perfect. We don't want to come back to you for amendments. So we're going to take that time to get our application in good order, working with the ECD on review before we submit, and then we'll submit before the March 1st deadline. This is a chart we've shown you a couple of times. In green, there's the staff recommendation on 30% or 40% of sheltering. We've included in this chart, a couple of counselors asked, Counselor Roy and Counselor Nagin and others perhaps asked to see what sheltering 0% of this project would, would mean for a tax shift. And so we've included that here to give you some sense of what that looks like. It's going to, compared to a 50% sheltering, it's going to be about $700,000 in lost state funding. So I mean, I think that's a powerful example of why the TIF can provide benefit to the city and to the general fund budget, because 700 grand in state funding in a year like you're heading into, it's a, that's real money. So 0% has shown up on the screen. Councils asked for projections of what 50%, 60%, 70% look like, and so those are depicted in the following slides. And I'm going to come back to this one, because I think we'll land here for our discussion. But at 30%, what we're proposing is transferring just a little bit more of municipal staff salary over to the TIF to provide general fund savings. And so that's what the 30% recommendation looks like. The 40% recommendation is the same with an addition of moving the business development fund, which is a $250,000 annual appropriation of the general fund, moving that off of the general fund and into the TIF. That's a powerful tool for helping to start up businesses across Lewiston, helping to support businesses that might be challenged in the current environment, helping businesses who might want to expand their, their services or their offerings. We have a pot, we'd like to build this pot of flexible money to help assist those businesses with low interest grant, low interest loans. The council requested a model at 50%, and so we've put that together. It roughly mirrors the previous example, but it includes now 1 and 1/2 million of LCIP projects that could be bonded and then used to funds to pay off that 1 and 1/2 million dollar bond over 10 years or less. The proposal at 60% is the same. We move some additional municipal salaries off of the general fund and into the TIF to help relieve some of the pressure on the general fund and help the local property taxpayer. And as well, we increase the, the amount of funding of projects in the LCIP up to 3 million, which would again be a bond. And then the council request at 70% is all of what we saw on the previous slide. Some members of the council requested what, you know, we would envision as a, as a new economic development program, and so this is a very basic sketch of what that could look like, which includes capitalizing a facade improvement program to help spruce up some of the storefronts in the major corridors in the downtown, as well as some funds for marketing and funding for some of our partners. So those are the various scenarios of how different levels of TIF could be allocated. I'm going to go back to the slide I mentioned earlier, and we'll kind of leave it here. I think first question would be helpful is, you know, what range are members of the council comfortable with? Staff are recommending 30 or 40. We've put up on the screen at your request, 50, 60, and 70. I think it's really an attempt to find some consensus here where we get to a level that folks feel like they can live with. Maybe it's not what you desired initially, but what you could live with. Happy to try to answer questions you might have.
One quick question here. So regardless of the, you know, some of the higher levels included money for projects, right? When would we have to select those projects? Or how much, how much time would we have to decide?
That's a good question. I think it would be part of your, your budget process and your LCIP work in the spring, whether we make the final decisions in the spring or we push it off a year. I think you can, you can make that decision amongst yourselves. I think there is some time. The pressure to select projects is not there in the way that the pressure is to submit an application for.
So to be clear, we don't need to select the projects by application deadline?
Correct.
Excellent, thank you. Yes, questions and comments from the council? Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm still very confused about the timing of this. We're talking about.
If you could move the mic over to you.
Still a little learning curve here.
You're good, you're good.
A little learning, I was told that they were, they would pick me up across the room, but that's not the case, I guess. The difference between fiscal years and tax years, I had been operating for a long time under the impression that if we elect a percentage TIF now, and that's submitted to state DECD, that we would be seeing the results of that in fiscal year 26, which is the budget that we will be working on as soon as we finish the LCIP. That's not the case, however, is that correct? That we are looking at the effects of our decision today and the tipping of this project to become effective in fiscal year 27, so that it would not affect the budget that's upcoming.
I believe, so the assessor is here, and he can confirm the distinction between tax year and fiscal year. But what we are talking about is, is tax year lagging fiscal year by one. So if we're talking about fiscal year 26, we're talking about tax year 25. And if we're talking about fiscal year 27, we're talking about tax year 26. We want to create this TIF now-ish, so that we can take advantage of these two milestones that are coming up and have the chance to shelter these two sets of investments that are, that are coming. The, the program that we envision, the full-fledged, fully online, fully invested program doesn't start until FY '27, but the TIF could create some benefit for you in FY, in FY '26, which we're contemplating now. Bill Healy is our city assessor, can confirm tax year lags fiscal year by one.
By one year, that is correct. So our fiscal year runs obviously from July 1st to June 30th. The tax year that, the tax assessors use is April 1st. And when a TIF is established, whatever year that is, it's based on the previous April 1st. So if the TIF is approved, it's going to be based on assessments from April 1st, 2024, based on March, so the date would be March 31st of 2025.
Okay, so the, one of the sheets in here indicates we have a current valuation of 186 million dollars in that inverter station. And they are paying full boat tax on that. There's no TIF, they are paying the same tax rate that all of the residents in Lewiston are paying.
That is correct.
This April 1st, if I'm reading this correctly, the appraised value of that inverter station will increase by $76 million.
That is correct. Assuming Central Main Power, NECCC, they declare usually in May, it's usually later than April 1st, but it's as of April 1st. So we should have that information, but we expect, based on the estimates they provided, that it will be about 76.75 million.
Okay, and that, that valuation is value that will be taxed in fiscal 26, the budget that we're working on right now. We can count on roughly the tax on $76 million, additional valuation of the city, just from the, just from the NECAC project.
Yes.
However, that would not be subject to any of the tax increment financing that we're discussing right now, because that would not kick in until fiscal '27.
So, go ahead. So I think we're talking about sheltering a portion of this new value. So if council decides 50% is what we're going to do, then half of this new value that we're talking about, 76 and 3/4 million, is available to you to support the general fund in the current budget cycle. And then the following year, an additional amount, roughly half of that, 76 and 3/4 million is available for next year's budget as well. Does that help answer your?
Partly, yes. So this year, they're going to be paying taxes on $76 million, and if the council decides that half of that money is going to go into tax increment financing, then that goes into a special bucket that we can use to spend only on specific projects.
Correct.
If I've done the math correctly, we get about a 1% bonus for agreeing to limit our freedom to spend that money any way we want. It's a 1.1%, somewhere in there. Is that TIF money, based on our decision on January 14th, is that TIF money available in fiscal '26? Will we get the full benefit of the additional revenue in percent, let's say half and half, just to keep the argument simple? Half of it goes directly into general fund, and we have as much freedom as we normally do to spend that money any way we wish. The other half, if 50% is the, is the amount chosen, goes into a special bucket for which we can draw funds only for specific projects. And that would apply in fiscal '26, the budget that we're working on right now. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Correct.
We're looking at a budget in round numbers, it's not going to be less than this year's tax rate of 31.77, so let's talk $32, 32 mils. We are receiving then the benefit of 32 mil taxes on $76 million of valuation more this year, this coming year than we have been during the current fiscal year.
Correct.
Okay. All right, I'm digesting that, because I, that's what I thought was going on, and that's why I was inclined to suggest that we shelter as much money as possible at the 60% level. That's the number that I've been throwing out for the past three workshops. That still gives us the addition of 32 mils on roughly 40% of $76 million. And I've taken a look at Director Roy's numbers, and with some finagling, I think we can do that, particularly if we use the TIF money to fund projects that are already currently in the general fund. I'm not, not at all excited about using TIF money to fund new projects if we're going to take it from the general fund. If we can take salaries and payroll, I was looking at the state definitions, one of the things that can be funded with the TIF is homeless shelters. Now, I just said. Now, I just said that I'm not interested in spending money for new projects just so that we can shelter it. I would much rather take money from the general fund and spend that out of the TIF bucket, effectively spending it in the same place, but taking advantage of that 1% bonus that we have for sheltering it. We do have a commitment, a moral commitment, if not a legal one, to stand up a shelter this coming year. And if I'm reading the state law correctly, TIF money can be used for that purpose as well. Is that, is that?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm, I'm still not convinced that 60% is not the number that we should be recommending you prepare a TIF application for review by DECD. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Najin.
So just real quick, I want to go over a couple of pieces about, so this year, the full Walmart valuation hits our budget, right? And then there's, there's a certain portion of costs that were tipped. Is that correct?
The Walmart TIF has expired.
Okay.
Yeah, so that money goes into the, yeah.
So this year, we get the full value of whatever the tax value is. But in that, there was the staff costs for Economic Development Department. So that would either go back into the general fund, or we would have to, this is interesting, I'm figuring out where to speak into this microphone. Or we would have to, we would, we would, we would have to either cut the Economic Development Department budget or put it into the general fund. Okay. So that's, I guess that's, that's pretty straightforward. I guess the other question that I have is, can we do TIFs as, so if we did the NECCC TIF as a portion this year and did a different portion next year, is that possible? Or does the plan have to go forward all at once? And because we're talking about different amounts that will hit the books, so like, for instance, this year we're talking 76 million, right? Next year, 76 million. Can we have two different TIF proposals for the two different years? Or would it have to be done at once?
The application is structured such that you are setting a captured, a sheltered percentage. You set one percentage, and I've advised the council that, you know, if you are thinking about adjusting this as time goes on, that you set maybe a higher percentage at the beginning, and then you can back it off later, and it's a relatively simple exercise. If you go in the reverse, it requires an amendment.
Okay. That's clear. And I just wanted to make a general comment just about looking at using TIF funding in order to cover the cost of a homeless shelter. The issue that I continue to have is that the TIF funding should be used, in my opinion, in economic development within the city. There can be an argument made that, that the homeless shelter is an economic development strategy. I also think that, you know, when we're talking about the cost to the taxpayer and having a city-directed shelter, it's not necessarily a city-funded shelter. We need to find a partner that understands how to attract individual investment, nonprofit investment, to follow up on grant opportunities. We have $2 million that was given by Main Housing to stand up the, a shelter. And so like, there's, there's a question on whether or not we'd be taking revenues from the city that we could be using for investment, for economic investment in the city, or to reduce the overall budget costs and acquiring a new cost that may be unsustainable.
Councilor Glant, did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I do. How are we doing here? Good? I have two questions, actually probably have two, but as I look at your March 31st, the $76 million, and then I see March 31st, 26, $76 million. Are we basing this TIF on 150 million? Are we basing it on 76, and the following 76 would go into the general budget? I'm a little confused in the, in the way it's laid out, because if we're going to increase the TIF next year, who gets to say where that money gets to go? Just goes back into a kitty? There's something goes into economic development, you decide where it's going to go? You know, I don't, I don't see a long range for two years. I see a one year if it's based on 76. What is the second year look like if we do it a second time? And who gets to determine? Because now we don't have to ask anybody, maybe ourselves, where that money's going to go, what's going to happen with it.
Yeah, so you're, you hold the purse strings annually, which includes how we, how we fund economic development in the city. What we've shown you on this screen is 76.75 million is available to possibly shelter. We're asking you what portion of it you want to shelter, and it's going to probably be the same portion the following year. So if you decide on 50%, half of that 76 and 3/4 is available in year one for the general fund, half for economic development. The same is true the following year.
So if we could roll back to your little picture of what 50% looks like, so you're saying?
This one or the prior?
Previous one, please. So you're saying the annual TIF at 50% is 1.2 million?
1.3, yep.
Okay. So the following year, it's going to be 2.6 million?
Nope, this is, this is showing you fully, fully completed projects.
So that's, that's taking the whole 300, that's what I want to know.
Yep.
So the reality is this year, we're only looking at 700,000.
Correct.
If I could just add, the project won't be complete for two years. So we're, the NECCC folks said you can expect an additional 73 million as of this year, 2025, I'm talking tax year, and then as of April 1st, 2026, an additional 73.
Right. What I'm saying is those numbers technically for this year are halved, but not the whole number. So we're looking at 50%. We're not going to get almost 3 million. We're going to get one and a half million.
Correct. And I, you know, I'd suggest we're going to go through the budget process with you in the spring. I think we have some reserve from the Walmart TIF to help bridge us for this, for this year we're heading into before, before 1.3 would be available.
But again, still we have, I guess my concern is, when we're showing all these projects we want to vote on at some point, I'm thinking I got $3 million to play with, but the reality is I don't, not for two years.
Not for this current.
In two years, I'll have $3 million, but this first time around, I'm going to have 1.5, which is a big difference.
I would say this year, we're talking about half. Next year, we'll be talking about the full amount. I know the assessor said two years, but we're really talking about April 1 this year and then April 1 next year.
But still half. So when you go back to your, what you want to pay off, or what we use the money for, adds up to almost 3 million, it doesn't add up to half. So where's the other half come from? This coming year?
Can you restate your question for me?
Let's flip into the 50% next one over. Back, yeah, okay. Right there.
Yep.
You're showing 1.27 million over there in savings, but we don't have 1.27 million savings this fiscal year. We only have half that, because we don't get the other half till next year.
Correct.
So that's deceiving to me of what we're really going to be paying for, not paying for, so I'm already thinking like, half that stuff on the right I have to get rid of, based on this slide.
Correct.
I just want to make sure the council's aware of that, because it looks like a lot of money, but it's not there until fully two years.
Correct.
In that process. So that's my first one, because I didn't think we had that much money, that's why I want to make sure. You know, I'm, TIF, and I loved your explanation between what we do with construction and people's to hear, and I think the citizens need to know that, because they hear that word "TIF", and everybody's like, well, give them everybody a break, and we are giving a break, but not the kind of break we're talking about here.
We're not giving NECCC a break of any kind.
Right. This TIF here, this is going to be a break for the city by sheltering, and which a lot of people do. If you own a business, you try to depreciate, shelter, however that purpose, purpose works. I know early on, we already know there's almost a billion dollars in your coffers to cover all of your budgets this coming year. So we know that money for this year is not going to be an issue. It's not going to roll back in to our budget. So that, what's status quo last year should be, if I'm looking back at the director properly, should be covered no matter what we do with the TIF. There's going to be money there. Is that, would that be correct?
Correct. There will be, I did an estimate, I can get it.
800,000.
There will be enough to cover fiscal year 26. But remember, in 27, there won't be any funds, so that will have to go, an estimate, as I put on that spreadsheet for you, 530,000 will have to go back in the general fund, if you do not shelter anything.
Yeah, thanks. I want to shelter, but I just, you know, some people conceive that if we don't do certain things, we're going to fall off a cliff and add it back to the bottom line, and we're not going to. Because we have enough money to cover the bottom line as far as your area goes. We may not have $250,000 to help people paint up the front of their buildings and put signs up, but we're going to have enough money to cover our employees, and you guys go out there and try to find new business, and all that kind of stuff. So that's another concern I want people to be aware, be aware of as a group. I'm for tipping 60, 70, 40, 50. You know, it's, that's a, you know, when you go back, can we flip to the tax, tax one again, please? That's a great job on that. I mean, let's be honest, if we don't do anything, our taxes are going up three bucks, okay? And if we do 70%, our taxes are going to go up $2.85. So 15 cents on a mil rate, quite frankly, is not a lot of money. I know it's, we want to get down below that, but when you're looking at how we're tipping and what we're doing here, I don't want people to think that, and I'm saying this, I don't want people thinking because we do 50%, their taxes are going to go crazy because we took money away. So I'm trying to defend the TIF in that, because the people have contacted me saying, well, if you do that, then the reality is it's pennies, and then pennies add up, don't get me wrong. You know, we're going through a new valuation and everybody's, you know, counting their pennies today, but it's not like it's dollars if we go from 0 to 50 compared to what the situation is out there. And I want people to see that and be clear, that if we don't do anything and we go to 50%, the reality is it's only a few cents difference currently based on what we do, obviously. The value will be different based on how much we cut, how much we add, and that's our jobs to do here coming up. But the reality is that's controllable in that area. I would disagree with some thinking, I would like to see us put projects into the TIF that we don't want to have to pay for 30 years, i.e. homelessness. We're going to spend $400,000 a year, probably every year from now, if not more, for the cost, going out as a city, as a partner, whether we do it our own, if we do it our own, it's crazy. It's going to cost almost $7 million to stand this up, and we have 2.5. We're still a long ways away. So the fact that some of this TIF could be used that, and we know we're doing other things. I know your department's doing some work, and we'll hear from that hopefully and take care of all of our problems, as well as I'm working with the Senate and the local congressmen to try to get some money from them. But the reality is, that's where my concern goes into putting things into a TIF. I want to make sure they get tipped items into things that are going to be a bang for a buck, or the citizens can say, I don't have to worry about homelessness for the next 30 years, because it's covered. Got the Walmart thing, you know, so they'll have to come up every year in that whole process. My last question goes back to our director back in the back. She probably not going to like me anymore. If we were to TIF all the payroll, as much as we could, say we did 100% TIF, one up here, okay? Forget all the little projects, you know, just do payroll, which means for the next 30 years, how many departments will we not have to pay for? That's a lot of money. I mean, we don't pay for economics now, could we not have to pay for, I mean, is it, what is our total payroll, I guess I'm asking you?
You can't do the full payroll. There's, there's only certain positions that can actually be covered by a TIF and a certain percentage. So you couldn't cover like my salary 100%. It's just not eligible. So you couldn't take the full payroll and cover it by TIF.
That's good. I was just curious. I mean, it'd be nice to know that you only worry about cost of living and negotiations for next 30 years on your bottom line, you know, so from that standpoint. That's the only questions I have. I just want to be clear that what looks like a lot of money really isn't a lot of money. And we start thinking about projects and what we're going to do, I have grave concern with that, when people think they want to do 35,000 here, 50,000 here, and in reality, the money's not coming for at least two years. Thank you very much.
So yeah, a couple of things here. I agree with Councilor Najin that we should really exhaust all resources, other resources for funding for the homeless shelter before we dip into, dip into the TIF for that. You know, as worthwhile as that is, we, we need to, you know, hopefully find other sources of funding for that. And Director Libby, about half, because what we're, when we're talking about these percentages, we're talking about the second half of valuation, because 50% of the project has already been recognized, correct?
That's roughly true. I think when we talk about, say, 50% TIF fully implemented, that still means that 3/4 of the project is supporting the general fund, really only a quarter.
Exactly.
Only a quarter of it is supporting the TIF.
Right.
And in all of these scenarios, the project which is funded by Massachusetts ratepayers, those taxes are effectively paid by Massachusetts ratepayers. All of the tax revenue generated by this project is supporting our general fund in one way, shape, or form.
Right. And so, you know, for instance, even if we, we go with 50%, because you just mentioned it'll be 25% of the whole project, because half of it's already been recognized and is funding the general fund. And, you know, I was excited about this project from the very beginning, way back when, you know, because this represents money that, you know, for instance, like the, the substation isn't sending their kids to school, their substation isn't requiring, hopefully not, like fire services and so on and so forth. And so this is, you know, we didn't have to, you know, build out our sewer, you know, sewer system out there, et cetera. And so this represents, you know, for lack of a better way to say, this represents free money to the city, and, and I had always envisioned that we use this money to, to move Lewiston forward. And I understand a lot of things have happened since then. We've had a pandemic and the wild ride of inflation and so on and so forth. But I would love to, you know, as we're here deciding to think about what percentage, you know, to, you know, I understand that staff recommendation is, is what, the 30 or 40, right? I would love to see a little bit more, so that way we can make some, make some economic, you know, fund some projects that would spur private development. You know, for instance, you know, work, work on things that only the city's going to pay for. You know, as soon as, you know, for instance, as soon as we, you know, develop our canal system, the property around the canals will be more, will be more appealing, they'll encourage private investment and everything else. And so a company, or a company or an entity or a person could come and buy a piece of property and, and spend a lot of money on it and develop it, but they're, they're never going to spend money to develop the canals. We're going to have to do that. And yeah, I just want the council to be thinking about that. Councilor Sol.
Well, that is close, isn't it? Can, I'm sorry to have you do this again, but can you explain? I'm just a little confused. I think it's the next slide. So where it says, like, all the percentages, so let's just go to 70%. That's sheltering more. I don't like that. But then it raises the taxes more. Now I'm a little confused.
Sure. If you look at the note on the bottom of this sheet, we have on the far right-hand column, the mil rate calculation, which was prepared by Director Roy, and that's on the sheet that you all have. And then that middle column is the TIF calculations that I've run. And it, I think what I'm trying to note here is that these two columns are not synced up, because a lot of these, a lot of this modeling is like squeezing on a balloon. If you squeeze on one side, the other side's going to get bigger. So these two estimates that you have are not fully integrated. Where Director Roy is projecting a, a increasing mil rate, the more you shelter, that's sort of a straight calculation of how much valuation is going to be there to support the general fund. But that calculation doesn't take into account the additional state funding you, you would receive the more you shelter.
Okay.
And so, you know, I, I think there are some limits into how sophisticated we can model this for you, but we hope you trust that, you know, that the benefits of sheltering are presented to you, the challenges with your general fund budget are real, and I think an approach that gets a consensus maybe in the middle is how, is maybe what you want to try to navigate towards.
I'm comfortable with what staff recommends, but I'm, I'm getting the feeling that other counselors want to go a little higher, so I, I would compromise with 50%. But yeah, I was just a little, a little concerned when I saw the taxes going up the more we were sheltering, but that makes sense, that the state funding is not in that, so thank you.
Councilor Glant.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to respond that there's no guarantee the state will go up. That's an assumption on the part of us, that we're going to get more money because we sheltered, because we really don't. sheltered, because we really don't know what the state's going to do. You know, so I hate when we say that because this could be a year that the state decides, and they've done it in years past, they're going to pull our purse strings in, and we're going to have to get by with what we can get by. So until we know our guarantee that the state's going to go up, I still support the tiff, but I want to stay away from the tiff's not going to be because we'll get more state because there's no guarantee, or we'll get more school money, you know, because the valuation thing is in Augusta, and they ain't figured that out yet. Thank you.
That's a fair point, Counselor. And if I could respond, Mayor, briefly, you know, I was sitting in your chair, actually, I was sitting in Counselor Harriman's chair during the recession, the Great Recession, and, you know, those were incredibly difficult budget times when we laid off staff. We did everything we could before getting to that point, and then we had to go over the cliff and do that incredibly hard thing. But even during that time, when we were trying to figure out how to pay for all the expenses, we did not at that time roll back any sheltering of any tiffs. Because if at that time we had rolled back sheltering of those tiffs, the net would have been a loss still because of, even though revenue sharing was cut, it would have been cut further if we had done that.
I agree. I'm just saying if we can't guarantee.
Can you use your mic, Counselor?
Thank you. I agree. I'm just saying we can't guarantee it's going to go up. I would not go rolling it back. Got a hand in the back there by the person in charge of all the money.
Director Roy, did you have something?
I just wanted to clarify that the estimates that I did give you did have the revenue in there. You can see that I estimated per Director Libby's revenue numbers on his. You can see where it says city, you'll see an increase in revenue. On the 70%, I did 1,001, and on the 60%, there was 942. So those numbers for what we're going to receive for revenue, that's estimated for revenue sharing and state subsidy for the school are in these calculations.
Thank you, Director. Counselor Glant, are you all set?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to clarify and point out that the effect of a tiff is going to be much greater this coming year than it will be the following year because it's very unlikely that the valuation of the inverter station will be adjusted by Tyler and their reval of the city. Is that a correct assumption?
That's correct.
And if the tax rate goes down as a result of the revaluation, then the revenues from the NICAC inverter project are going to go down correspondingly.
That's also correct.
So the more we shelter this year, and I like very much the fact that we can reduce these tiff ratios without penalty, whereas increasing them would be difficult. The more we shelter this year, I think the more revenue the city will see. Whether it's higher or not, to Counselor Glant's point, is accurate. I mean, we can't guarantee the school funding, we can't guarantee the county taxes or the avoidance of county taxes, nor can we guarantee the general revenue sharing. However, we can guarantee that if we don't shelter money, then those would, we would see fewer of those revenues and more of those expenses than if we did shelter. So my argument is that we should shelter as much as possible, as much as reasonable and feasible this first year with the understanding that we can go back next year and reduce that. I'm still holding out, I would like the council very much to say, we recommend that we shelter 60% of the incremental costs of the additions this year and next year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. Just adding on to that comment, I wanted to point out that the slide previous to this one with the two green bars on it, it does assume a post-revaluation tax rate. So these numbers are, you know, they're not going to magically be cut in half. I was a little worried there for a second, and then I remembered that note was there. As far as the percentage that we shelter, I believe I said 50% last time. I'm still in the 50% to 60% range. I think that's reasonable, especially since we can reduce it in the future. So that's where I am still right now.
Counselor Najin.
So just a few thoughts overall. Again, you know, mandatory costs that reduce the general fund expenditures, reducing some of the LCIP pieces that are required, right? Because when you look at the LCIP, sometimes it's a wish list, right? There are certain projects on there that you're like, that's just never going to happen, which is okay. We don't need to create a fund in order to pay for those pieces, just the ones that we actually need to borrow from. I just wanted to come back to the shelter piece real quick because it's true that in our community, we have done a poor job of answering the needs of those most in crisis, and that has actually created an opportunity cost for us. We've lost business due to the fact that there is a high amount of people in crisis that are plainly visible, and there's also costs that our community incurs in ways that we, when we don't take care of people. For instance, a trip to St. Mary's psych unit is not free, making sure that people aren't on the, you know, making sure that people have main care. I mean, that's another piece that doesn't come off the municipal back. But again, I would just say, making sure that we have, if we shelter, let's say, 60%, 70%, we know that there's an expectation that the mill rate does not go up this year. Hopefully it goes down. And so there's going to be some hard decisions that we're going to have to make no matter what, and I just want to point that out. So whatever goes in here should be reducing both the general fund and then also investment in our community that will return a stronger tax base. That's my position on it. And I would be comfortable with a number between 40% and 60% for sure, provided that it meets those requirements, that we're reducing the general fund expenditures, that we're alleviating some of the LCIP, and we're actually investing in ways that will increase our tax base.
I agree with, you know, those who have mentioned the 60% number. Yeah, Counselor Chittam, I can get behind that. Yes. Director Libby.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've heard, we've heard from several counselors on percentage ranges, which sound like 40%, 50%, 60% is what I've heard. I've also heard an interest in taking municipal salaries off the general fund, so it sounds like we have consensus that as far as the program design goes, we want that. At our first workshop, I recommended as far as the suite of activities that we're going to fund with tiff, we make it broad and big so that we don't have to go back and amend this thing over and over again if we want to fund a shelter in the future, or we want to fund a facade program, or we want to market the city. So if I could suggest, we'll bring you a program that roughly aligns with what we've talked about here, what I've heard here. It's going to include several items, homeless shelter, marketing, arts, all those things. That's not going to commit you to spending money that way right now. It's just going to provide you the options for the future. So if folks are agreeable to that, we'll bring you that as a development program. And then I think the question for you all is try to come to some consensus on your number, 40%, 50%, 60%, or something in between.
The counselors that we haven't heard from yet, how are we feeling about 60? Counselor Roy.
It is, yeah. I'm looking at, you know, 60 doesn't sound bad, but again, I like the recommendation of everybody. I'm looking at maybe 50% is the highest I really want to go. And whatever benefits the taxpayers, right, we got to get some bang for our buck with this, like Counselor Najin said. That's what we need to do, so.
Counselor Longchamp, did you have some thoughts?
Yes, I would be comfortable with the 60%.
Counselor Najin.
Just one point as well. When we're talking about going wide and then getting small, right, I think there are pieces where if we're firing on all cylinders as a municipality, we will be more innovative and that things that we list right now, maybe we don't need them for a full 30 years, you know. So I think that's just an important point to illustrate. 30 years down the road can be a completely different situation economically and financially, depending on, and hopefully five years down the road, right? That would be the hope. But, you know, it comes down to, I think, you know, the ways in which we invest, the limited funds we have in order to, again, increase that tax base and lower the burden to the taxpayer, so.
Can I get a thumbs up for 60? How are we feeling about that? One, two, three. Yeah, okay. We have, what, three? How are we, I counted three. How do we feel about 50? I think we'll, give us something, Director Libby, at 50.
Is that the consensus?
Yeah, yeah.
50?
Yeah, no, I saw the thumbs, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Najin.
Just really quickly, what about 55? Just asking. Three wanted 60, four wanted 50. Is 55 a compromise?
No. Moving on.
Hold on, counselors, I will recognize you. Do we have an appetite to discuss 55, counselors?
Yes.
It looks like, give us something at 55, Director Libby.
So I saw, I saw four votes for 50. I saw four votes for 55. I need some clearer direction.
Oh, I mean, that is, that is the latest thumbs up, and we had four votes for 55.
Okay. Is that the?
I'm giving you our last answer.
55 is the last answer?
Yes. The last thing we said was four for 55. Would you like to see it again, Director Libby?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Chittam.
We're not making any formal action here, but I would like, I would like to have a thumbs up for 55% as your best and final offer.
55%? How are we feeling about that, counselors? Yes, we're, we're good, Director Libby, 55.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your help and assistance through this project.
Likewise.
Director Healy, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's 7:01. We're going to take a quick break here and reconvene as quickly as possible for our evening meeting. Thank you.[1365.01]
...waivable or supersedeable by the council because of the order of the suspension. In general, that's it. I think that people who have been following the rules for this past year won't find a big transition among these new rules. Be happy to answer any questions if that's permissible, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, and I have some questions. So in section 2.3.3, that's on section three. So you have, you know, eighteen minutes at the beginning of the meeting. And then it says the duration of this comment period may be extended by the council, but that's right after the sentence talking about the fifteen minutes at the end. Are we also intending that the eighteen minutes could possibly be extended? I guess, and the reason I'm asking is, you know, let's say we get through eighteen minutes of public comment and there's one person left. I mean, I don't think it's fair to ask them to spend another three and a half hours here with all of us until we get to the second period.
The mechanism for that would be suspension of the rules under section four. That would allow a supermajority, five members of council, to say, yes, we'll waive the eighteen minutes. We'll suspend the rules for this meeting. And public comment at the beginning of the meeting can go on for as long as the council determines. So that is now an option that we did not have technically under the rules last year.
Okay. I guess my only concern here, and I realize that there's been some heartburn about public comment and, you know, and things, public comment at the beginning of the year, there were a number of issues that led to a lot of public comment. And normally, we don't have a lot of public comment. You know, the joke is that I'm excited to get back to boring meetings as quickly as possible. And, but I'm, I guess what I'm not in favor, and first of all, I do appreciate all the time that you've spent on this and, you know, kind of organizing things and making it more, more clear. I think that is time well spent, and thank you very much. I guess my only concern is the introduction of, you know, for lack of a better term, bureaucracy into public comment. You know, how it has, you know, for the entire time that I've been mayor, this past year, and then the two years preceding that with the other council, sorry, with the preceding council. So, you know, there's, there's public comment, and then the presiding officer, you know, is given latitude to, you know, use their best judgment. And most of the time, in fact, all of the time, it's been okay. And I just, you know, now, if there's, you know, in the scenario that I just used, if there's one person left after the eighteen minutes, we now need to vote to suspend the rules. And then we're going to have to vote to allow public comment. And versus like, okay, well, we're just going to let this person speak. We will, we will be spending more time doing all of that than just letting this one person speak. And, and there's been scenarios in previous meetings where, you know, I have, you know, allowed, you know, the public, there's been a couple of scenarios where I've allowed the public to continue to speak during public comment. And then, you know, it's been brought up that there's been fifteen minutes and so on and so forth, and we need to, you know, you know, there's always discussion about that versus just allowing people to speak. And, yeah, so I guess I'm just worried that this will be interrupting the flow of the meeting and so forth. And, you know, and there's already, I would also like to offer that there's already like guard rules in place, you know. Should the council, you know, not agree with the decision that the presiding officers made, they're always free to appeal the decision of the chair. And so, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with most of these rule changes. I'm just concerned with the rules surrounding public comment here. Would you, I guess, Councilor Chittam, I invite you to, to respond to that before I recognize other people, if you so choose to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're absolutely right. And the point being that this is a decision of the council, not a decision of the presiding officer. That really is what it boils down to. I do not see a situation where the council would not very expeditiously say, we want to extend the public comment period, we suspend the rules. I think it would be a matter of a minute at most. So it really is a matter of procedure and protocol. This is a decision that rests with the council and not with the council's presiding officer.
Thank you for your interpretation. Counselor Gallant.
I'm just going to agree with Counselor Chittam. I don't think it's going to take that much longer, and I think it's important, A, for the extended time, when we do have more people, and maybe more people will come out if they think they have an opportunity to speak. I think that's very important. You know, and if there's one person or two people there, and we opt to as a body to allow it to continue, we can do that. You know, if there's ten people there, then depending on the issue, we might still tell them it's okay to do that. You know, we've had some hot issues where people can do that and not stick around for three hours. And I like the idea of open comment on the outside, on the end of everything, because people can hear things and then decide they want to talk about it.
Counselor Sol.
I'm not sure who my question's for. Probably Counselor Chittam. So I like the changes. I think it's important to let the public speak. My question is, the fifteen minutes at the end, is that going to be additional because there are additional speakers wanting to speak? Or somebody comes in halfway through the meeting and wants to speak, and now we have public comment at the end of the meeting as well?
Counselor Chittam.
If I may answer that, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The protocol is to direct all questions through the chair. And since we're talking protocols, let's observe those. The intent is to, if, if there's an overflow, and I'm going to refer specifically to the request of the public that we endorsed a resolution or created a resolution on the Gaza conflict. That with, that drew a lot of people into the council chambers when we had a lot of other items on the agenda. In that situation, the council could easily vote to extend the initial public comment period if there's one person standing in line. If there are ten standing in line and we have other business, then, then the second comment period would kick in. I'm not aware that that is a fifteen-minute, although I may be mistaken.
Yes.
What section is that?
It's on page three.
Page three.
Okay. Should, and the rules say, should additional speakers wish to comment, a fifteen-minute period will be provided toward the end of the meeting. The duration of the comment may be extended by vote of the council, which is not a supermajority anymore, it's simply a majority vote. So that fifteen-minute period may be extended by four members, by four members of the, voting members of the council. I, I thought that it was important to have some kind of time period in there, but I didn't think it would rise to the level of requiring a supermajority to extend that.
Can I respond?
Counselor Sol, did you have more questions?
Yeah, actually, now, reading this, I read it like saying, should additional speakers wish to comment, meaning additional speakers that are already there, not speakers that wander in at the end of the evening, then we would have an additional public comment at the end of the meeting. Correct? Yes?
I think that's a nuance that I hadn't even considered. If someone walks in fifteen minutes before the end of the meeting and wants to make comments, I, this rule would permit that.
Okay.
Counselor Harriman, or, sorry, Counselor Sol, did you have anything else? Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Counselor Chittam for redrafting these rules. I think they, they're in a much more logical order now, and similar items are placed near each other, so they make a little more sense. I did have one question, if I may ask Counselor Chittam, about the, the two public comment periods. Would a person who comments during the first one also be allowed to comment at the second one? Or would it be based on if there are other people ahead of them in line? Or how would that work?
I don't think that was addressed in the rules. It's an excellent question, Counselor Harriman, I'm sorry, with your permission, Mr. Mayor. I think the intent was that people be, given an opportunity to speak once. And if they'd spoken during the initial comment period, they would not be encouraged to speak during a potential second comment period. I don't know that we want to get into record-keeping and who has spoken and who hasn't. But if the council wishes to limit public comment to one three-minute period per person, whether it begins at the beginning of the meeting or the end of the meeting, that's easy to do by amending the policy. These are not ordinances, so we do not have to have second readings and public hearings. We can do this on the fly, if you will.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Counselor Nagin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Counselor Chittam for basically going through the weeds on this. There's a lot of tightening up of the rules and making things function a little bit better. I also agree 100% that these are council rules that are decided by the body. And having a consistent manner in which we apply our public comment periods removes the appearance of favoritism or, or possibly the, the appearance of trying to shut down certain comment. I would also say that we want people to engage with the council, and we want people to engage with the council at, at city council meetings. And so, when you think about how these meetings go and how the, the schedule, a person's schedule is, you're not always guaranteed that somebody's going to be out of work to be here at seven o'clock in order to make a public comment. Also, there's a certain former counselor that I'm sure would love to run down here and make some comments at, at the end of a council meeting, as they have in the past during the, during the meetings as, as they've gone on. I think it all makes sense. I have no issue with it, and, and I appreciate the work that, that you did in order to put this forward.
Thank you.
Counselor Gallant.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify that 2.3.3 does say, "In there only once," which means you can't talk later. It's already in writing. So a person who speaks the first time can't stick around to the end and speak again.
Are you, are you proposing a change, Counselor Gallant?
No, I believe it was covered. Somebody was concerned if somebody could talk more than once, and we don't have to worry about that, as it's already covered. It says you can speak one time. And I, I think you can speak one time.
Further, further comments from the council? We prefer go to public comment for this. We're now going to public comment for this agenda item.
Matt Roy, word three. Counselor, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Nagin, I was not a city council. I was the reference you were making, first of all. And then, I guess, I guess Mr. Aggron and I are going to just save all our comments for the end of the meetings now, since we're going to be the only two probably still here then. There are two other concerns I have. The section of the proposed rules that have been there forever that state there are two regular meetings every month, but as, as you all remember from last year and the council before, if you're a Counselor Harriman, that come November, well, come October, we're going to waive the rules because we don't have a city council meeting the night of the election for obvious reasons. And then in July and August, we waive them for the same, well, a similar purpose. And I guess the, the whole idea of a second, then the other new business, which historically, until the last council, "or staff" was never included, which would, well, no, under previous councils, I guess this is why I think Counselor Nagin was pointing me out, because for years I used that as a second non-agenda item. And we could have just go back, delete the words, or, or strike the words "or staff" from the new, other new bus, any other business line, and use that as a comment period. Auburn has been having two non-agenda public comments for years now, if not decades. Ah, thank you.
Matthew Aggron, word four. Thank you, Counselor Chittam, for writing these new rules. I like a lot of them. There are some things I wish that you guys would look at adding or changing. The first being that the presiding officer is allowed to adjust the order of business. We published these agenda packets, they're sent out on Thursday now. I know that item nineteen is item nineteen. Therefore, I know that most nights, nine-thirty, item nineteen's going to come up. If it's moved to item four, people who were coming in for nine-thirty to speak, you've just de-entfranchised them. The second part is the agenda packets. When they're published, they are the agenda packets. We no longer amend them on the fly. We've done this multiple times this year. We don't see them. I don't know if you guys have seen the agenda packets, they're changed, but even when they've been amended by Kathy's godlike staff, they're not updated completely. The agenda packets that you guys get and we get should be what you have to vote on, not revised ones that no one sees. The new second comment period, I like it, but I'd like it moved to the end of the meeting, after your line where it says, "All other business." And because I'd like to remind you of the night of June 4th, after Counselor Nagin admitted that he and five others of this council failed at transparency by using official email to conduct an illegal meeting about allowing public comment on the school budget, and I wished to speak. That night, I was denied the opportunity to respond to his admitting, so I don't think you should limit us to one comment, because that was nothing that I was planning on. That was something that Josh admitted, and I give him credit for it, because it takes a man to admit that he made a mistake. But we should be able to respond to that. Also, you guys offer business, you know, have ideas or things that should come up. We may have quick comments. You want us to wait two weeks or bug you by email? We can just fire them off the hip at you. Also, workshops. Workshops should not be open to public comment unless it's voted on by you guys, the meeting before. Otherwise, like that school committee meeting, that school budget meeting, it can be hijacked by special interest groups who get told, hey, we're going to have public comment. Well, nobody knew about it. So vote on it, the meeting before, so it's in the agenda packet for that workshop that says, hey, there's going to be public comment. You guys know what's going, you're going to want public comment on, what you don't. I'd like to see more places where we can have public comment in budget hearings.
Mr. Mayor, three minutes.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Further public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number two.
Item number two, election of city council president for 2025. There are two items for requested action. The first one is to receive nominations for the role of president of the city council.
Counselor Gallant.
I nominate Counselor Chittam.
Do we have other nominations? Counselor Longchamp.
Counselor Harriman.
Okay. Madam Clerk, have you noted those nominations?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Excellent. Further nominations before we move to discussion? Discussion among the councilors? Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. I just wanted to say it's been a privilege to serve as the council president for the past year, and I hope to continue in that role for the next year, and I would appreciate the support of my fellow councilors.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Counselor Harriman's service as council president. I do believe it's time for new blood and a fresh approach to the limited authority that the council president has, and, and I would hope that the council would see that this is an opportunity for change. Thank you.
Counselor Gallant.
Thank you, Mayor. I have seen growth with Counselor Harriman this year, I won't deny that. However, after last night's snafu at the school budget, school meeting over there and, and little action taken from him in that standpoint, I can't, I can't vote for him this time around, because too many things were done wrong that he had the power to correct and did not.
Counselor Sol.
I would like to say that I think Scott has had, you've done a really great job. You've definitely improved from earlier when we were maybe a little upset with some of the things that happened. But I do think you've done a great job. I would like to see what David can do. I just, I like David's attention to detail and stickler for rules. So, yeah, I would give my support to David.
Counselor Nagin.
I'd just like to say, number one, I have, I do appreciate Council President Harriman's dedication and service. I greatly appreciate the time that he's dedicated to the role. I, I would also say that, and this is no slight on Counselor Chittam, but Counselor Chittam does seem to have a little bit more spare time. And so, in, in that, in that capacity, since there's a lot of change that we've wanted to see in the community, I think having the ability to, to really focus singularly on, on some of the goals of moving some of the council policy forward would be helpful.
Further comments from the council? We're heading to public comment for this agenda item.
Elizabeth Eames, word three, also word three. I would speak in support of Scott Harriman remaining as council president. He's done a terrific job on the school committee as well, and I would like to speak to Counselor Gallant's charge. We were following what we were told were the rules, and so we were under the assumption that we were following the rules, and we are re, we're going to readdress the issue. So I think Counselor Harriman should not be charged with having done anything wrong, nor I. So Counselor Harriman has done a great job as the school committee representative. So I'd like to speak to that. And also, whoops, excuse me, from what I can see in the public part of what goes on on the, in these council meetings, he's done a good job there, too. I don't know what happens behind closed doors, of course, nor do you, Counselor Gallant.
Further public comment?
Jim Parakelis, and I'm a resident of Lewiston. And I would like to endorse Counselor Harriman for reelection as council president. I think he has done a wonderful job in his service to the council and to the community. And one thing that I am particularly struck by, as somebody who's involved in our arts and culture scene, is that he is an extraordinary supporter of the arts and culture organizations and the people working in the arts and culture sector in this community. He is amazing at coming to events, and he is supportive of the people at the events. And it's a, a place where he represents the city government to the people of the city in, in a very special atmosphere, which is arts, and, and not political or municipal governmental affairs, but a place where people meet as equals and share in arts experiences. And I think to have, and I know he's not alone on this council or in the, the ranks of the municipal staff in coming regularly to events, but it really matters, and I thank him for his support.
Matthew Aggron, word four. I, too, will say that I've seen a great change from Counselor Harriman since the beginning of the year. However, at the same time, Counselor Chittam, he is detail attended. And going forward, we need somebody to focus on the details. As council president, I think he'd do well. These meetings might be longer. Oh, did I say that out loud? But also, neither, both of you guys have responded to me when I've sent emails out to you. However, I also will look back and say, the one thing that Scott disappointed me the most with was when the school budget was brought up and they went to public comment, he was part of the group who had held an illegal meeting. They used email to, that Counselor Nagin started with, to say, hey, we should have public comment at this budget hearing. There was no, and then Scott blatantly admitted to me in an email that he did it, that you guys did it. I got to give him credit for blatantly admitting it. I still have the email, Scott. But you guys, lack of transparency. Counselor Chittam has been very transparent in most everything he's done, as far as I can tell. And I'd like to remind you, we want that from the city, is transparency. Thank you.
My name is Hamda Ahmed. I live in Lewiston, word three. I'm here tonight to support the city councilor, Scott Harriman. I have known Scott for about two years, when I was traveling to DC together in a rally happening in DC. After he introduced himself, we shared a close relationship, and I admire his patience in serving his constituency and his commitment to the true leadership. He makes himself available to the public, listen every day to people about their experience to inform his decisions. Scott is usually quiet in assuming and has minimal ego. His leadership focused on getting the work done and supporting others rather than seeking spotlight for himself. With his understanding of the work of the, of the city do, I'm confident that he will be continuing to make the great job that he is doing right now. Thank you.
Further public comment?
I'm a Lewiston resident. I would love to see Scott continue on in the work that he's been doing so well. I've worked with him through the Public Arts Committee and, but also just being a part of Lewiston Public Education and just seeing his dedication and kind of reiterating what some of the others have said, that if something's happening in town, Scott's there, and that's usually where I run into him, is because he's a part of something going on downtown. And I don't doubt for a second how dedicated he is to Lewiston. Thank you.
Public comment is now closed. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Excuse me, sure. When councilors vote, they should either mention one of the two names. Counselor from word one?
I support David Chittam for council president.
Thank you. Word two?
Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. Word three?
Counselor Harriman.
Word four?
Counselor Chittam.
Word five?
Counselor Chittam.
Word six?
I'm voting for myself.
Counselor from word seven?
Counselor Chittam.
Motion passes by a vote of five to two for Counselor Chittam as council president.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Item number three.
Item number three, public hearing on a renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Fast Breaks Incorporated, 1465 Lisbon Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Fast Breaks Incorporated, 1465 Lisbon Street.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second by Counselor Gallant. Discussion. Public comment. Back to the council. They have really good pizza. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number four.
Item number four. Public hearing in first passage for an amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Two, definitions. Requested action that the proposed amendments to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Two, definitions, to amend the definitions of homeless shelters, receive first passage by a roll call vote, and to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam, seconded by Counselor Herriman. Planner Norton, thank you for joining us. Please kick us off.
Yes, good evening. So, what's before you this evening are a set of recommendations from the planning board for changes to the zoning and land use code related to how homeless shelters are regulated, as well as where they're allowed. So, the first set of changes are to definitions, as mentioned. This is partially to align the definitions with changes that you made to the business licensing, Chapter 22, earlier, late last year. And then also, to provide some distinction in shelter types, as far as whether they're open 24 hours or not, and also sizes, which the planning board used to determine zoning districts where they are recommending shelters.
Thank you. Comments? Yes, Counselor Nagin.
So first, I just want to say, thank your team very much, and thank the planning board for what was an immense amount of work. And I'm very happy and comfortable that the recommendations are coming from a seven-zero position for the amendment changes. Again, it was a lot of heavy lifting, and I know a lot of consideration went in to how these changes would affect our community, and also, support our community. So, thank you.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, thanks to the planning board and staff. This has been, as Councilor Nagin said, a lot of heavy lifting, and I think, by and large, there's been an excellent product that's come out of it. I do have a question on this specific item in the agenda. It refers to 24-hour programming, and I think that distinction is well-made. However, it says either on or off-premise. And I'm a little confused. Part of the consideration that the planning board had when they were making these distinctions was, if a shelter is going to tell people they have to leave at eight o'clock or nine o'clock in the morning, as most, if not all, do today, and provide programming from that point at another section, another area in town, how does that differ from a shelter that does not provide that programming? There's still going to be an exodus of homeless people in a particular area from the overnight shelter. How does that, what's the distinction, and why does having an off-premises programming help?
Yeah, good question. So, the discussion they had, a few examples were given. One would be for a youth shelter, a family shelter, where children or youth are attending either school, or a GED program, or some sort of other technical training, and so they would be taken off-site by a bus or other transportation. Similarly, there could be some sort of a work program, where people are going to a site for either work or training. I believe the intent was that it's something sponsored by the shelter, where there would be transportation provided, and there would be set hours where they would be going off to that alternative programming, if you will.
I'd like to add to that. We're talking about also day treatment programs. People won't realize you could be in a shelter, 24-hour shelter, but you leave during the day to go to an eight-hour program, five days a week, for your recovery, or whatever program you're in. So, there's a lot of programs out there where people are encouraged, or actually required, to leave the shelter, to get through their program, follow whatever it happens to be, and then they get to come back. That's also where an off, the shelter's still responsible, in a sense, because the person's still tied to them.
Counselor Nagin.
Just to add on to that as well, like, there are several community partners that offer some sort of service to people in our community, and many times, we have situations in which these organizations are working in silos, and I believe that having the shelter system actually pull together some of these tools and resources that are in our community in order to give people agency, and also, more opportunity, is playing to the strengths that we have in our community, and the community partners that are here, and not requiring one organization to be the one-size-fits-all solution for all, for all things related to folks who are experiencing housing instability.
Counselor Herriman.
Thank you. And it's my understanding that the planning board recommended that all homeless shelters of all different types and sizes be conditional uses across the board? Is that correct? Okay.
That's right. Yeah, so currently, they're all conditional uses, and they didn't change that. They want them to still go through the conditional use review.
Okay. So, if they're, you know, during that conditional use review, if the shelter's plan for participants leaving the site didn't meet the planning board's, you know, didn't make sense to the planning board, they could either require that to be reviewed, or they could deny the permit. So, I think, I think it shouldn't be too much of a problem.
Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. All good points. However, I do have a concern. Many of the shelters that are operating today are 12-hour shelters, eight to eight, nine to nine. If, if a resident, guest of the shelter is going to be asked to leave at eight o'clock and go to a particular GED class or recovery program, and that class doesn't last until the shelter reopens, then there's really no distinction between a 24-hour shelter and a shelter that is essentially a warming shelter, or an overnight shelter. My concern is that a 24-hour shelter does not have the ability to ask people to leave. And if that shelter can ask people to leave and go to a particular program, and I applaud Counselor Nagin's comments, that yes, we want these, these programs to work together, if the 24 hours isn't continuous, it isn't consuming, then there's no distinction between a 24-hour shelter and a shelter that doesn't operate full-time. So, I guess I'm looking at the possibility of removing either onsite or off-site from this definition. We're going to be looking later on, in another item, at where 24-hour shelters are allowed, and where non-24-hour shelters are allowed. And there's a big difference in the, in the city as to where those facilities can be located. So, I'm trying to make it as easy as possible for shelters to open in as many places as possible.
Did you want to say something, Planner Norton?
Yeah, I did want to say that when either staff and the planning board, because they'd be doing a conditional use permit, but initially, when staff looks at an application, and we're determining if a proposed use is allowed in the zoning district where it's proposed, we would be looking at that, and we would be requiring that they provide some sort of proof or information on how they're a 24-hour operation. So, we would be looking for hours of operation, we would be looking for information on that programming, so we can verify that information. I do agree that the way it's phrased, there is probably a little bit of a gray area there for how that might be interpreted, but I think the board wanted some flexibility, because it is different types of programming that could be taking place. So, I think there might be a small fear that that happens, but I think we would have the checks and balances to look at that and make sure that they are, at least, if they end up operating something different than what they told us, then, then we would be able to go back to them, like we would for anything.
Counselor Gallant.
Clear as mud. We're talking about two facilities, a 24-hour and a regular one. That's why distinction says two categories. One is a 24-hour, and one is not. So, the 24-hour has the option of onsite and off-site, but they're still available for those people 24 hours a day. So, if I go to my rehab, and I get sick at noon, I can still go back to my facility, because they're required to be open. Okay? That's why it says onsite or offsite. That's the difference between the two. I always have a place to go back to. Whereas, the second category, you do not. It's eight to eight, and at eight, eight oh five, you have to move on and figure out where you're going to go. And I think that's how I read that, and that's why I like the onsite part, or offsite part, because it allows the person running the facility the option to try to get them into some kind of program, or some kind of care, but they still have to be there. If I have 10 people, and all 10 go away for the day, I still have to man that 24-hour shelter. Okay? I'm still there, but I'm allowing them to leave. The other site, at eight oh one, they can lock the door, and they don't care till 7:59 at night, whether or not a person's coming back, or how they get back in there. So, there are two categories. When I read this, one is the 24-hour, and the second one is the shelter like we run now, currently. Does that make any sense?
Counselor Chittam, did you have something?
Yeah, and I think that the either on or off-site is unnecessary. I mean, I'm fully understanding, Counselor Gallant, and my, my impression was, that if it's a 24-hour shelter, then it's available for guests, clients, 24 hours a day. They're always able to be there. There isn't a requirement that someone who is utilizing the services of a homeless shelter be enrolled in a program. That's, that's a shelter decision, not a city decision. So, removing either on or off-site, either the shelter is open all hours of the day, and accessible all hours of the day, or it's not. So, I think that the either on or off-site muddies the water. Period.
Further comments from the council before we go to public comment? Public comment for this agenda item? And back to us. And Planner Norton. Counselor Chittam, yes?
I would, I would make an amendment, then, to remove either on or off-site parenthetically in the three instances it appears in Section Two definitions.
We need a second in order to have that. Seeing none, that motion has failed. Further comments from the council before we go to a vote? Anything further? Planner Norton?
No.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number five.
Item number five. Public hearing in first passage for an amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Three, official map. Requested action that the proposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Three, official map, to eliminate the homeless shelter overlay district, receive first passage by a roll call vote, and to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam, seconded by Counselor Herriman. Planner Norton, please kick us off for this agenda item.
Okay. So, the proposal from the planning board is that the current homeless shelter overlay district would be eliminated, and in its place, existing zoning district designations would be used to determine where shelters are allowed. In Article 11, it gets into the specificity of some of the requirements, as far as whether there's the buffering or other elements. But, in this item in the packet, we did include a map that highlights where shelters would be allowed, based on either size classification, or whether they're a family, youth, or an adult shelter, and also, based on size. I can pull up that map, if you would like.
That would be great, for folks at home. While she's doing that, Counselor Herriman.
Thank you. As other councilors have mentioned on previous agenda item, I really appreciate the planning board's work that they put into this. I watched all the meetings related to this, and I know this map was, you know, was discussed at length, and again, really appreciate all the time they put into it. I think this makes a lot of sense. It makes it, it expands where shelters can go in the city, but also, respects the various zoning districts that we have, as far as what size shelter, what sort of impacts it will have on the neighbors. And I think it will, it'll do a good job of allowing more shelters to be developed, but also, make sure that they fit into the surrounding neighborhoods.
Counselor Nagin.
I would just like to point out, because maybe I'm colorblind, but the, the yellow area on the map is also, co-measure it with the, with the blue crosshatch, right? So, it kind of looks like a green crosshatch?
Yes.
But it's really, it's really yellow, and then the blue. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Chittam.
Thank you. We are going to be discussing the specifics of zones and permitted uses in those zones, or conditional uses in those zones, in a subsequent agenda item. I'm very much in favor of removing the shelter overlay, but I'm afraid that if we commit to this map in item five, that that commits us to what we are going to be discussing at length in a subsequent item, when it comes to specific zones. Can you address that?
Yeah, so it is definitely related to Article, Article 11 changes, which is number eight, I believe.
Right, yep.
Yeah.
It is eight, yes.
If the, if it's the pleasure of the council, we could kind of discuss those, and I don't know how that works, if you can discuss them at the same time.
For the purposes of this, please continue.
Okay. So, if we look at Article 11 changes, which is your agenda item number eight, you can see that, at this current time, we have a Note 40 in our land use table. Staff has drafted, based on planning board recommendation, a number of restrictions, if you will, or just requirements for a shelter to be allowed in these districts. So, while we're looking at a map that, that doesn't specify, you know, if buffers are required, or other things like that, when you get to Article 11, you see that there's some of that specificity. So, it isn't as comprehensive as, as what you're seeing on this map. So, in that Note 40, we do repeat some of the, you know, we say in words what we say on the map, to some degree, in that the small and medium family and youth shelters, which are 24 hours, are allowed in a certain set of zoning districts. Then the large family and youth with 24-hour are allowed in a smaller subset of districts. And then, large adult shelters that are 24 hours are also allowed in the industrial Item D, we talk about the buffer requirements. So, there is repetition of the buffer that is in your licensing for schools and daycares to have a 20, 250-foot buffer to shelters. They have added to that buffers for parks of 250 feet, and then also, are suggesting that instead of going from door to door, as your current licensing does, that it would be from property line to property line. And then finally, F talks about having multifamily, I'm sorry, having large shelters be required to have screening from adjacent uses, like a multifamily development would. So, that's what Note So that's what Note 40 talks about. There's a chart, which we've labeled the Shelter Zoning Matrix, which provides clarification in chart format that may be helpful to people as to which zoning district shelter types, whether they be small, medium, or large, whether they be family and youth or adults, and whether they be 24-hour or non-24-hour, where they're proposed to be allowed. And that's primarily the changes. The use chart is really just a minor change to show that the shelters are allowed in most all zones. However, with that Note 40, where it limits and restricts, so it's not as permissive as the chart makes it look.
Counselor Chidham.
Thank you, Planner Norton. And you've hit on one of my concerns, and that is allowing in the industrial zone, adult 24-hour, large adult 24-hour programs. My concern is that if we get to Agenda Item Eight and discuss this in detail and decide as a council that that is not a good use of land that we have reserved for industrial use in the city, does that impact then our decision to adopt the zoning map under Article, under item five?
Yes.
So we've got a cart and a horse here, and we've got to decide which to do first, I think. I would move we table item five until after a discussion of item eight.
Do you have a second for that?
I could agree with that, yeah. I would support that.
Madam Clerk, will we be able to pick this back up later in the meeting? Shouldn't we table it now?
Yes.
Excellent. The motion to table is now on the floor, and I would just move that we go to a vote at this point. Madam Clerk, please conduct the vote.
Counselor from Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Madam Clerk, we did not go to public comment on that agenda item, correct?
That is correct.
Well, if you can make a note, so we can, please make sure to do that when we come back.
Sure.
Item number six.
Item number six, public hearing in first passage for an amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Four, Establishment of Districts. Requested action that the proposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Four, Establishment of Districts, to eliminate the homeless shelter overlay district, receive first passage by a roll-call vote and to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Glantz?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Chidham. Planner Norton.
So this article is a list of the zoning districts in the city. And the proposal is to eliminate the homeless shelter overlay district, which we would need to do if we're not going to have that anymore. I don't know if you want to move forward with that or table, but...
I invite, yeah, it makes sense to table at this point then. Or Counselor Chidham?
I don't know that it does make sense to table it. I think we can take action on eliminating the overlay without impacting our decision-making on Agenda Item Eight.
Correct.
So we can simply strike the overlay from the ordinance in the list. That, I believe, is the motion that was made.
Okay, yes. Further discussion? Public comment on this agenda item?
Again, Matt Roy, Ward Three. My understanding is, based on how both the previous item was worded and this one, they're basically very similar. So if you're going to table one, you would table two. Because one's the map that gets rid of the district. The other one gets rid of the district verbiage in the Code of Ordinances. So they are linked. So if you're going to table one, you should table both. Thank you.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Counselor Nagy.
Just to speak to the shelter overlay district. So this was added to our zoning during the last council, right after the moratorium for shelters went in place. And I think that several folks in the community saw it as a solution quickly in order to control how and where a shelter would go. I think we're moving past that in order to establish a more normalized version of what housing looks like or shelters look like for people that need them. So I'm fully in support of voting to overturn the shelter overlay, regardless of anything else that passes, so.
Yes, Counselor Chidham, did you have something else?
Yeah, if I could speak briefly to Mr. Roy's concern, there are more items in the official map than simply the removal of the overlay. It also adopts items that we'll be discussing under Article, under item eight.
Further comments from the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number seven.
Item number seven, public hearing in first passage for an amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Ten, Conditional Uses. Requested action that the proposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Ten, Conditional Uses, to add review criteria for conditional use permits for homeless shelters, receive first passage by a roll-call vote and to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Chidham, seconded by Counselor Nagy. Yes, please.
Currently, as we mentioned earlier, all of the shelters are required to get a conditional use permit under the current regulations. The proposal is to continue requiring conditional use permits for shelters. The conditional use permit criteria and the planning board and Board of Appeals are the ones that typically utilize this as they're the two boards that can grant conditional use permits. Currently does not have anything specific for homeless shelters. You can see in the language that was provided that we do have standards for shoreline areas as a specific area. It was planning staff's recommendation that the homeless shelters have some additional criteria that would be reviewed in addition to the generic criteria. And five items were identified by working with the planning board with language for additional criteria that they would look at when they're reviewing a homeless shelter.
Discussion from the council. Counselor Chidham.
Thank you. Lots of work, lots of thought. I'm very much in favor of these conditional use guidelines and restrictions. I have to live up to my reputation, and I'm going to ask that there be a slight wording change in outdoor spaces. It says currently, "It is recommended at a rate of 50 square feet per occupant or greater." And I would very much like that to say, "Recommended to be at least 50 square feet per occupant." It says the same thing, but in a lot less clunky language. The wording would be, "It is recommended to be at least 50 square feet per occupant," period.
Are you proposing, one second, Counselor Chidham. Madam Clerk, could we consider this a friendly amendment? Should the people who first and seconded it agree?
Yes, you could.
Okay.
I'll second that if nobody else has.
Well, we need, can you remind me who first and seconded this motion?
Counselor Chidham moved the item, and Counselor Nagy seconded it.
Okay, so you're, I guess we're, this friendly amendment has now been accepted. Further comments from the council? Have you noted the change, Planner Norton?
I have.
Excellent. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
I don't believe you've gone to the public on this, have you?
Oh, thank you, thank you. Yes, public comment for this agenda item. Now's your chance. Back to the council, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One? I'm sorry, Ward Seven. Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
I know what you meant.
We are now up to item number eight.
Item number eight, public hearing in first passage for an amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 11, District Regulations. Requested action that the proposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 11, District Regulations, identifying additional districts where homeless shelters are allowed and to remove the shelter overlay district, receive first passage by a roll-call vote and to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
May I have a motion, please? Counselor Harriman?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Chidham. Planner Norton, please explain.
I gave a summary a little while ago. I don't know if folks want me to say any more, answer questions. I can certainly do that.
Thank you for jogging my memory. Questions or comments from the council? Yes, Counselor Chidham.
I do have two concerns about this proposal. First of all, as I mentioned earlier, I think that the industrial zone of the city ought to be reserved for industry, for the uses that it was initially designed. We are very much trying to encourage economic development and to take even two acres of this land that's been set aside and reserved for specific purposes and dedicate it to large adult homeless shelters operating 24 hours a day. That's a small subset of this group. To dedicate it to that defeats the purpose of the industrial zone. I'd like to debate that point with the other members of the council. I do have a second point that I'd like to bring up after we discuss this one.
I mean, my initial reaction to that is that, you know, you can make that argument for any zone in the city. And, you know, an industrial zone probably wouldn't be the most ideal location for shelter in the sense that it's not walkable to services that the shelter guests would need. But I guess I'm kind of hesitant to exclude zones at this point, especially since we got rid of the overlay. Counselor Glantz?
Thank you, Mayor. And I agree, I don't think we should eliminate that area. I think the positive of having something there is the simple fact that we have businesses there and individuals who are in these shelters might find work within walking distance to be able to go ahead and do jobs and learn trades and things of that nature. And so for me personally, would find that a benefit for those seeking to upgrade themselves and do different things.
I would also like to remind the council that we just passed, you know, all shelter permits will be conditional use and will require approval. Counselor Nagy.
So first, I have just a point of order, I guess. So is it the underlying zoning district or the conditional zoning district that this would apply to? The reason why I'm asking this particularly, there's several industrial conditional use zoned areas, like for instance in my neighborhood, right? Even though it overlaps with NCB anyways, I'm just curious, would it be the underlying zoning or the conditional use zoning?
That's a good question. It might depend on how the contract zone was written.
Okay.
So some of the contract zones do kind of say whatever uses are allowed and, you know, whatever zone designation. Others, it may be the uses that were allowed at the date that the contract zone was adopted. So it may not be applied across the board the same.
My suggestion would be possibly that you look at the underlying zoning based on the fact that several of the industrial use zone, conditional zones, were in residential neighborhoods that possibly abut or in the middle of NCA, for instance. And so that's just a thought for that. And then I guess, you know, just to speak to the industrial zones, I believe like 2% to 3% of our tax base comes from industrial at this moment. And the decrease in industrial revenues for the city have decreased greatly while there's a lot of land. And so I think, considering the amount of work that the planning board put into this, as well as staff, I'm comfortable with starting somewhere. And if we need to modify it later on, I know a lot of consideration went into, you know, these pieces, so. But the one thing I am a bit concerned about is just the conditional zoning when it sits in an area that's incompatible with that type of shelter as the underlying.
Further comments from the council? Yes, Counselor Chidham.
Now, the reason I bring up the industrial zone is that I know that this was not a unanimous decision by the planning board. There was some concern on the members of the planning board that industrial land should be used and reserved for industrial purposes. So I brought that up simply as a way to get the council to recognize that there were concerns at the planning board level.
Public comment for this agenda item?
Alex Pine, 18 Wakefield Street, Lewiston. I am a current planning board member, and I'd be happy to provide maybe a little more context on why we ended up adding an industrial for the one, and I'm speaking in a personal capacity here. So just being a tape recorder, from what I remember, this is my memory, not official from the planning board. The concern from one of the members of the planning board who asked us to introduce this was that there just simply isn't the type of site available in the city for a large adult 24-hour shelter. And indeed, if you look at other communities such as Portland, their newest shelter is in an industrial zone. You can have all sorts of debates on whether or not that's a good thing. But it seems like, you know, a facility of that scale, that size, the type of lot, the type of building is going to be found in that zone. Highlighting again, you know, all of these projects are going to be, you know, conditional use projects. They're going to be reviewed. And so, you know, again, this is a place that we are starting. We're trying to open up the ability to develop some of these services because they're sorely needed. And so I would say, you know, we did deliberate quite a bit on that point of, should industrial be in there or not? I think it was on the table for at least two meetings. We had a lot of back and forth on this. So I would encourage you to, you know, consider it as it is. We did do a lot of work, and we received a fair amount of public comment as well during that work. And really tried to come up with something that was balanced. I don't know, how much time do I have left?
Just continue.
A minute, okay, great. Yeah, and so, you know, I think one of the things I also wanted to highlight is this transition to zones means that we're thinking about this in terms of compatibility with the surrounding buildings, right? And I've heard people mention this a couple of times, this sort of idea of, well, maybe it needs to be walkable, maybe it needs to be this, maybe it needs to be that. That is an issue that is solved with the programming, and that is sort of a licensing thing that we want applicants to consider. And we actually ask for that as part of the conditional uses, sort of, we want a transportation plan. We want to understand how these things are going to work. Because we realize to get people to services, to get people to jobs, to get people to training, to school, you know, children, they're going to need different forms of transportation. And that doesn't always mean walking. I think we often make an assumption that people who don't have a house are just going to have to walk everywhere on their own accord, and we can't give them some services. So again, we think we did a lot of work here. I think we did a lot of work to really try and balance concerns around development. And we really hope, and I really hope, that this makes it through with sort of all of the voices that we were able to incorporate and make this cohesive vision, or as cohesive as we could. Thank you.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Counselor Nagy.
First, I appreciate planning board member Pine's information shared. And I would like to say, originally I was concerned about the underlying zone. But it's true that all of these shelter programs are going to be conditional use anyways.[1787.42] use anyways. So, I no longer have that reservation, thinking it through, um, so.
Counselor Chittam?
Uh, thank you, and thank you, uh, Mr. Pine, for your insights at, to the industrial zone. I do wanna bring up another item, and that is the inclusion of a 250-foot buffer around city parks. There are 22 city parks in Lewiston, and when you measure buffers from property line to property line, the area affected by this buffering requirement becomes significant and substantial. Planner Norton, do you have a, a map that shows the locations of parks, schools, and daycare centers in the city? Thank you.
Yes, so the map that I'm showing right now, and we'll just, uh, move down to the bottom so you can see the key, um... Parks and school properties are green, childcare are red, and then the yellow are the parcels that would be within that 250 feet.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Chittam, yes?
I would like the council to consider removing city parks from this buffering requirement. I understand, although I don't agree with, the buffering requirement from childcare and schools. However, I don't understand the rationale behind buffering from parks. If you remove parks from this buffering requirement, it opens up much more of the allowable areas, uh, which basically form a crescent around downtown, uh, for the majority of, of shelters. It opens up a, a, a larger percentage of that by removing the parks. So, I, I guess I'd like to understand the rationale for including parks in the buffering requirement, and I'd like the council to consider the impact of removing parks from the buffering requirement in this section. Thank you.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. I would agree with Counselor Chittam on this. Um, I personally don't feel like there need to be buffers around any of these uses, but it does make, um, some more sense that childcare and schools would be, would be buffered a little more. Parks are really public amenities that everyone of all age, of all ages uses, um, and I would also like to strike those from the, from what's buffered.
Counselor Najin?
So, just in thinking about, um, where we have had unhomed individuals residing in our community, um, you know, we've, we've had folks at Franklin Pastures, at Parity Park, at Sunnyside Park, um, but also, um, you know, I think that there's... We've got a lot of park area, right? We've got a lot of parks. Um, and so, uh, maybe there's a way to look at, um, parks that we wanna protect, um, in some ways. Um, you know, like I think Franklin Pla- Pastures may be appropriate due to the elementary school there, as well as the, the high school, um, you know? And honestly, I'm comfortable with moving forward with what we have here, um, in order just to start somewhere, um, you know? But I do absolutely agree that, you know, like, there are, different parks function differently in our community, right? And so like, Jude's Place is a, is a particular type of park. Kennedy Park is a large park downtown, you know, so like, the, maybe at some point we need to review that, um, but I'm comfortable with moving forward with what's here, too, so.
I mean, I, um, you know, right now you could visit any of our parks in, in town and probably, uh, find a member of our unhoused, so, you know, if we, if we follow that, you know, having a shelter on the edge of park that would give them someplace to go, and, and, yeah, I, I, I think, I think I'm okay removing buffers for parks. Um, Counselor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm not, just for the reason you stated. I, I don't think that the shelter needs to be using a park as their official playground or hangout where people could go to. So, I think the parks are designed, and we're trying to promote the city of Lewiston into a family-friendly type area to go to. We have one right up here, if you walk around, you, you gotta dodge the needles. Not that that's gonna stop by not having something next door, it should at least give it a little more buffer or possibility for some more outlying parks. And it's not gonna stop all of them, so, I wouldn't support that, I think we should leave it in.
Counselor Sol?
Yeah, I wouldn't support removing parks either, for the same reason, they need to be around schools and daycares, um, like Counselor Glant said, I mean, any given day out, right here in Kennedy Park, it's just not family-friendly anymore, and I don't wanna see that happen. And I'm not saying that that's gonna happen just because of homeless, but look at Kennedy Park, and I just don't want to see that throughout the entire city. So I would not be in favor of removing that, so.
Uh, Counselor Najin?
So, just to, to come back to that, this is specific to the, uh, single occupant shelters, right? Family shelters and youth shelters don't have the buffers, am I correct?
That's right, it would be adults only.
So the adult-only, uh, single occupant, and so, I can say, um, I'm comfortable, again, uh, with, with keeping the parks out for the moment. I think that, um, you know, i- if, uh, youth shelter can be adjacent to a park, I think we just have to get back to normative uses for our public spaces. And so, you know, like a park is a park, and that, that we should do parky things there, so.
Further questions or comments from the Counselor Chittam, yes?
I don't understand how providing a 250-foot buffer is gonna address any of the concerns that my fellow counselors have raised. If there is a 250-foot buffer from property line to property line, it excludes a lot of potential area for homeless shelters in the crescent that has been approved for the majority of them, that is the Sounderville, and I don't remember all of the initials, CV, DR, Downtown Residential, M, NCB, and Urban Enterprise. Those are the only areas in which the majority of these shelters, uh, are allowed anyway, and that typically forms a crescent around the downtown area, uh, stretching up along the river. If you include parks in that, that removes a great percentage of that, and I, I haven't done the math, but it, it seems to me that it's very likely that there is less area available for a shelter under this regimen than there would have been had we not just removed the overlay district. I think that it's easy to fall into the trap of saying, "We want parks reserved for non-homeless people." Uh, "We wanna protect the home, the housed, from the unhoused." And if we go down that road, then we should be looking at setting buffers for supermarkets and homeless shelters, because more people go to supermarkets than go to parks. So, I am concerned about disenfranchising the unhoused, and I'm also concerned about reducing the available area in the city for shelters. Thank you.
Uh, yes, Counselor Najin, did you have something?
Yeah, just, just as a, as a last piece there, um, you know, our, our different... We have to look at how many parks we have and what they actually do, right? Cause in some places, we're just, we're talking about a piece of grass we mow that nobody uses for any purpose, right? Sunny Side Park is, I'll use Sunny Side as the example, uh, is the gateway to the Riverwalk. Um, it has a public bathroom in it, um, which is specific for anyone to use, right? Including the unhomed. Uh, I have absolutely no problem with unhomed folks using public amenities the same way that everybody else does. Um, you know, ultimately, I think that, that the challenge is, um, when we're talking about single adult shelters, there is, um, the same challenge that we see with some of the shelters that close downtown, when we have, uh, population that doesn't have any place to go, that ends up at a library, right? Uh, so we're using something that normally would function as, uh, a public amenity as, as a warming shelter, um, you know, uh, during the day. Um, and, you know, the, I, I don't wanna lose too much sleep over it, basically, is what I'm saying. I think that, that, that there are arguments that can be made to remove some of these parks, uh, for sure, but, um, and, and some I don't agree with, cause, you know, like for instance, Jude's Place, again, and, and Franklin Pastures, I think that these are places that, you know, uh, um, youth and family should be, uh, you know, the, the prevailing, um, uses. But, again, um, I'm fine with what's here, um, for now, and we can, uh, maybe review, um, as, as time goes along, if we find that there are proposals that are put forward, uh, that are, that sit within these spaces.
Uh, I do agree with David, that the buffer will, you know, you know, let's say, it's now 250 feet away, this is a really, um, short walking distance, people will still go to the park. I, um, yeah, I, I think the, the buffers are just, uh, an unnecessary, um, uh, unnecessary, uh, step here. Counselor Sol?
I just wanna end with, I understand that it takes up a lot of, it eliminates a lot of space, but when you look at the map, there's still a lot of space left for them. So I really, I don't think that, um, it's gonna be as big of a, an issue that some may think, cause there's still a lot of space left for shelters.
Counselor Chittam, did you wanna add something?
Uh, just one point. Uh, Jude's Place, Franklin Pastor are already excluded because of the Connor School and the High School, that's, that's one parcel of land, and because there's schools there, they already are subject to the buffers. So that, that particular park is unaffected by the inclusion or removal of parks as a measuring point for buffers. I'm thinking about particularly Riverside. If you look at the yellow running up along the river here, Riverside Park removes all of that land which would otherwise be acceptable under conditional use from even consideration.
Uh, Madam Clerk, have we been to public comment for this?
We have, yes.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Najin, yes?
When you say Riverside, you're talking Sunny Side?
Uh, both Sunny Side and Riverside.
Okay, cause the Sunny Side Park, that, that large parcel?
Yes.
Is Riverside Cemetery Association land, that's on the backside of, uh, the Riverside Cemetery, on the other side of the culvert. Um, the, um, it's currently not developed, um, hopefully there will be a development plan coming forward at some point. The other side is actually sunny, that is also Sunny Side Park, um, so, it's, there's not, there's really not much in that area that's developed at this point. I'm, I'm imagining anywhere where a shelter would go, there would be a structure, um, but, and if somebody was proposing to put in a new, uh, new facility, a brand-new facility, I'm sure that during the development review, we'd decide whether or not we would allow it to go, um, so.
Uh, yes, Planner Norton, would you?
I just wanna just-
Love your comments.
-jump in. Um, one thing that the, um, council has touched on a little bit, but I did wanna make note that, um, if you were to adopt what the planning board has put forward with the, um, the 250-foot buffer from property line to property line, that will require a change to your Chapter 22 business licensing, because it's right now from door to door. So, that's a distinction for the council to consider as you're looking at this, which direction you wanna go, and then you would need to follow up with, potentially with a change of business licensing, if you wanna keep the, the property line to property line proposal that's before you.
Thank you for that. Uh, further comments before we go to a vote? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word se- excuse me, word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
And now, uh, Madam Clerk, I think we're heading, uh, back in time to agenda number five.
Yes, so, agenda item number five, I'll just remind you what the motion is that we have on the floor, which is that the proposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Three, official map to eliminate the homeless shelter overlay district, receive first passage by a roll call vote, and to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Uh, do, do we need a motion, a second, or are we all set?
You are all set. Are we, the motion was to table it until after the completion of item number eight.
We are now having public comment for this agenda item. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Uh, item number nine?
Item number nine, public hearing in first passage for an amendment to the Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 11, District Regulations Regarding the No Name Pond Conservation Overlay District. Requested action that the proposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 11, District Regulations Regarding the No Name Pond Conservation Overlay District, receive first passage by a roll call vote, and to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam?
Second.
Second by Counselor Najin. Planner Norton?
This proposal is for changes to the No Name Pond Overlay Zoning District. If you want me to pull up a map to show that, I can certainly do that. I'll just be a minute here. Okay. So the green line, um, with the horizontal stripes that you're seeing is the No Name Pond Conservation Zoning District. Um, the light blue outline around No Name Pond is shoreline zoning. So we've got two different, um, overlays showing on this map, but I just wanted to point that out. So what we're talking about with this is that currently, um, we have some restrictions around No Name Pond to protect the water quality of the lake. When staff recently was asked by a couple of different homeowners in the last year about rebuilding existing camps, one that had burned, and another one that they were looking to put a more permanent foundation and replace the home, um, we realized that there was, um, a restriction on new structures, that we didn't see an opportunity for someone to replace an existing structure. We believe that this might be an oversight, but because of the way the language is written, the stricter of ordinance language applies, so staff is not able to allow what might be allowed typically under shoreline zoning, within 100 feet of the lake, um, for a rebuild or reconstruction, um, we have something stricter in place. What the planning board proposed for a change is that within that 100 feet, if the shoreline area standards, which meets the state requirements, allow the reconstruction or, um, replacement of a existing structure, um, that we would allow it, as well as there is an allowance for an expansion that the state law has, that we have in our shoreline area standard. So essentially, if the shoreline area standard allows it, um, that it would be allowed. It wouldn't change the prohibition on building structures within 100 feet for, um, you know, new structures essentially. It would only be for an existing condition or a condition where something was severely damaged or destroyed. We also have, um, in this language, the requirement that there be in, um, installation of either vegetated buffers or infiltration for that replacement or additional expanded area, just to provide a little extra protection for the lake. Um, so that's the proposal that's before you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, comments? Counselor Chittam?
Thank you, Planner Norton. I am very excited to see the infiltration, uh, and buffering requirements, uh, and I recognize that this- requirements. And I recognize that this makes the Shoreland zoning and the conservation overlay compatible and consistent. So I'm very much in favor of that. And I'm not going to make a motion to this, but I would ask with all of my heart that anytime you see the words "No Name Pond" in the ordinance, that you capitalize them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further comments, questions from the council? Public comment. Back to the council. Yes, Counselor Nagin?
I just want to say that I'm in support of seeing infill redevelopment in places where there were previously homes. It's, you know, I think some of our zoning, it gotten a bit restrictive and didn't allow people to fully use their properties in ways that create improvements. So I'm totally for this.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes, we did have public comment?
We did, yes. What, we, we had the opportunity for public comment, and all members of the public chose to comment.
All right, yes, I'm, I'm, yes, my vote is yes, 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 and yes again.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Recognizing that the meeting has been quite long already, I would like to take, if it pleases the council, take a brief recess.
Yes.
And we will reconvene momentarily.
Yes.
But, but not before we profusely thank Planner Norton. Thank you for everything.
And the planning board.
We'll be back in a few minutes, Lewiston. Thank you for your patience. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Item Number 10?
Item Number 10, public hearing in first passage for an amendment to the Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 11, District Regulations Regarding the No Name Pond Conservation Overlay District, requested action that the proposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 11, District Regulations Regarding the No Name Pond Conservation Overlay District, receive first passage by a roll call vote, and to continue the public hearing to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Counselor Chittam?
Second.
Second by Counselor Nagin. Planner Norton?
This proposal is for changes to the No Name Pond Overlay Zoning District. If you want me to pull up a map to show that, I can certainly do that. I'll just be a minute here. Okay. So the green line with the horizontal stripes that you're seeing is the No Name Pond Conservation Zoning District. The light blue outline around No Name Pond is Shoreland zoning. So we've got two different overlays showing on this map, but I just wanted to point that out. So what we're talking about with this is that currently, we have some restrictions around No Name Pond to protect the water quality of the lake. When staff recently was asked by a couple of different homeowners in the last year about rebuilding existing camps, one that had burned, and another one that they were looking to put a more permanent foundation and replace the home, we realized that there was a restriction on new structures, that we didn't see an opportunity for someone to replace an existing structure. We believe that this might be an oversight, but because of the way the language is written, the stricter of ordinance language applies. So staff is not able to allow what might be allowed typically under Shoreland zoning within 100 feet of the lake for a rebuild or reconstruction. We have something stricter in place. What the planning board proposed for a change is that within that 100 feet, if the Shoreland Area Standards, which meets the state requirements, allow the reconstruction or replacement of an existing structure, that we would allow it, as well as there is an allowance for an expansion that the state law has that we have in our Shoreland Area Standard. So essentially, if the Shoreland Area Standard allows it, that it would be allowed. It wouldn't change the prohibition on building structures within 100 feet for, you know, new structures essentially. It would only be for an existing condition or a condition where something was severely damaged or destroyed. We also have, in this language, the requirement that there be installation of either vegetated buffers or infiltration for that replacement or additional expanded area, just to provide a little extra protection for the lake. So that's the proposal that's before you.
Thank you. Yes, comments? Counselor Chittam?
Thank you, Planner Norton. I am very excited to see the infiltration and buffering requirements. And I recognize that this makes the Shoreland zoning and the conservation overlay compatible and consistent. So I'm very much in favor of that. And I'm not going to make a motion to this, but I would ask with all of my heart that anytime you see the words "No Name Pond" in the ordinance, that you capitalize them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further comments, questions from the council? Public comment. Back to the council. Yes, Counselor Nagin?
I just want to say that I'm in support of seeing infill redevelopment in places where there were previously homes. It's, you know, I think some of our zoning, it gotten a bit restrictive and didn't allow people to fully use their properties in ways that create improvements. So I'm totally for this.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes, we did have public comment?
We did, yes. What, we, we had the opportunity for public comment, and all members of the public chose to comment.
All right, yes, I'm, I'm, yes, my vote is yes, 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 and yes again.
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Recognizing that the meeting has been quite long already, I would like to take, if it pleases the council, take a brief recess.
Yes.
And we will reconvene momentarily.
Yes.
But, but not before we profusely thank Planner Norton. Thank you for everything.
And the planning board.
We'll be back in a few minutes, Lewiston. Thank you for your patience.
Uh, hello, um, oh, Counselor, and we're back. Counselor Glant, I invite you to join us. We appreciate your service. Uh, Madam Clerk, what item, what item are we on?
We are on item 10, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, item number 10, please.
Uh, item number 10, order authorizing acceptance and appropriating funds from the Main Bureau of Highway Safety. Requested action to approve the order authorizing acceptance and appropriating funds from the Main Bureau of Highway Safety.
Um, have a motion, please.
Moved.
Counselor Harriman.
Second.
Second by Counselor Najin. Administrator O'Malley, would you like to kick us off?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, Main Bureau of Highway Safety has awarded grants totaling a little over $67,000 to the Lewiston Police Department for various traffic enforcement details. Uh, these details would be above and beyond what the officers no- uh, normally do in their day-to-day activities. And so we're something that the department receives annually, we're just looking for the City Council to approve and accept that.
Uh, I would also like to note that we have Deputy Chief Higgins with us, as well as Detective Fecto. Thank you both very much for your service and, and thank you for sticking around tonight. Uh, yes, questions, comments from the council? Uh, Counselor Harriman?
Thank you, I just wanted to, um, express my appreciation, especially for the, um, the funding for the enforcement, the distracted driving, the speeding and, um, and those sorts of violations. It seems like things have gotten a lot worse in the past few years. Um, I don't know if that's just attitude shifts after the pandemic or, or what it is, but, um, but this would be, this is greatly appreciated from me.
Uh, Counselor Chittam.
Ditto, and I'm hoping that, uh, not only speed, but also other traffic infractions, running red lights and that sort of thing can be incorporated and lumped into using the funding for this.
Counselor Najin.
Uh, similar statement, uh, obviously, you know, we have challenges with, with our budget pieces and so it's great that we were able to get the, these funds awarded. I'm glad that LPD went out and, uh, applied for and received these funds and I'm looking forward to the enforcement, um, so, thanks.
Deputy Chief Higgins, I just, uh, or Detective Fecto, or Administrator O'Malley, pedestrian safety, uh, what, how will that money be spent? I'm, I'm just curious.
Deputy Chief Higgins, come on down.
It's just, it's just a brief overview is fine.
It's basically, it's spent for overtime, uh, for the officers to, to work a detail, usually a four-hour detail is usually how they're hired, sometimes the two-hour details. And it basically pays for the overtime to go out and, and look for those type of violations, depending on what that grant is for at the time, that's the violation they concentrate on.
You know, in this case, like, somebody ignoring the crosswalk or, or something like that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Uh, public comment for this agenda item?
Alex Pine, 18 Wakefield Street. I'm all for having more sort of, uh, you know, realizing of public norms around, you know, however you want to get from one place to another. Uh, I walk for my commute, I walk from my house to my office pretty much every day, or I ride my bicycle. Yeah, and I just hope that, you know, uh, this grant is, you know, focused at both folks in cars and, you know, if there are people who are, you know, walking outside the crosswalk and things like that, too. Yeah, I, I would say that, you know, in general, um, it seems like in, in our city, a, a lot of, uh, bad interactions that I see are because of excessive speed from vehicles. And I know, at least for me personally, it's just very, uh, sort of harrowing sometimes to cross the street or even just walk on the sidewalk with, uh, folks just whizzing past and, and just feeling like they're in a hurry. Going through what are ultimately residential neighborhoods, you know, and people live along Main Street, I live along Main Street, so, um, definitely looking forward to it and I would love to see it result in lower vehicle speeds and just more care for, for each other overall, thank you.
More public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two, yes. Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Item number 10?
Eleven.
Eleven, thank you, item number 11.
Item number 11.
Uh, yes, uh, Counselor Glant, did you have something?
Thank you, I would like to combine item 11 through 19, they're basically policy items, still open up for comment, so we don't have to read every one of them, they're pretty standard.
Uh, negative, we're gonna go through them one at a time, this, this comes up every year. Uh, Madam Clerk, please continue.
Item 11, order authorizing the acting city administrator to execute a side agreement with a collective bargaining agreement with the main Association of Police Patrol and Detective Union for fiscal year 2527, which shall adjust the current pay scale and the union will pay a 50% portion of the Paid Family Medical Leave Act premium. Requested action that the, to approve the order authorizing the acting city administrator to execute a side agreement to the collective bargaining agreement with the main Association of Police Patrol and Detective Union for fiscal year 2527, which shall adjust the current pay scale and the union shall pay a 50% portion of the Paid Family Medical Leave Act premium.
Have a motion, please.
So I'll move.
Uh, Counselor Chittam, followed by Counselor Najin. Administrator O'Malley, would you like to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you or, uh, folks are aware, at least I believe you are, um, the Paid Family Medical Leave Act has taken effect, uh, the police union, were required to start paying as of January 1st, um, so I had to meet with the union and during our discussions, um, uh, with the union leadership, um, their concerns were brought up, as well as the chief and the deputy chief have shared with me, the, the numbers that they're down. They're down eight bodies right now, um, those eight open positions, um, there was some concern that officers were leaving, uh, to go to other departments because they get a higher rate of pay as, uh, as for longevity. So currently, the contract for the poli- patrol union, uh, the officers top out at eight, 18 years is their top step. They requested that that come, be brought down to 15 years. They do have a 15-year step, the request was to bring that down to 12 years, and then 11-year, uh, step brought down to 10 years. So there isn't adding, adding to, um, their steps, it's just the officers top out sooner, three years sooner than they did before. And the thought was that that would keep the officers here, giving them, certain officers a boost in pay, or they're close to getting a boost in pay, without adding, um, any additional steps to the, um, to the wage scale. With that discussion, um, they also, they agreed that they would pay their 50% of the premium of the, of the Paid Family Medical Leave Act. Um, as you, who are aware, we had to do that with the, um, AFSCME Public Works Union, um, that agreed to that, so this is what their agreement, what they're looking for. There is a cost, initial cost associated with this change, um, of a little over $122,000. Uh, the chief does have that in his current budget, unfortunately due to the open positions that he have, so this would not cost us to use any additional monies other than what's already been budgeted. Um, my hope is that will, um, attract additional officers. I did have a conversation with the deputy chief earlier, he did say that they are looking to, um, swear in a new officer, um, tomorrow, and that they're using the opening of the new police station as kind of recruiting tool, um, that they've actually taking people, um, walking through there, so my hope is, um, he's got some interest from what we call blue pins, which are, um, offices that are already trained, academy trained, that are gonna come here based on the fact of they can get a higher pay sooner and the, um, the attraction of our new police station.
Thank you, Administrator O'Malley, appreciate the, the good faith negotiations that took place between the union and the city and, and I support this. Uh, further com- Counselor Chittam, yes?
Uh, thank you, uh, Deputy Administrator O'Malley. My understanding is that this is a less costly option to the city than if the city were to pick up the full 1% family?
Yes, if, going forward, if we were to pay the full amount, it would cost the city more money.
Thank you very much for that, um, and the second question is, this total annual increase, 122,000, since this is a half year, is it 61,000, or is the impact for the half year at 122?
That's for a year, so it would be from whenever we pass that, so for this fiscal year, it would be the six months.
All right, and that then presumably would carry forward with coal inflations and so on?
Yes.
So the 122 is an added increase to police payroll in perpetuity?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Najin.
So I just want to make a couple of statements for the public, uh, benefit, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, please. Um, but ultimately, the reason why, uh, this negotiation started was because we had to, um, um, negotiate based on the Family Medical Leave Act, uh, requirement, correct?
That is correct, um, with the new law that was passed because, um, the police union did, this is not the same collective bargaining agreement that was in effect in 2023. This one that they're in right now just started July 1st, I had to negotiate a, a tax that was passed by the state legislature.
Okay, perfect, and, and we unfroze two officer positions, which I believe did not get filled, is that correct?
That is correct, uh, it's, I believe, eight, um, positions that I, he has opened right now over the police department.
And so I, I think it's important for our public just to be aware of the fact that, that, uh, it's, police departments across the country are experiencing a challenge with, finding folks to work at, at the departments, um, the policing is not what it was, um, 20, 30 years ago. Um, it, it used to be, uh, a blue collar job, that it could even be an entry-level job in some municipalities, now you need highly trained individuals, um, who are dedicated, uh, to, to the particular, uh, work and it's difficult to be competitive in those places. I normally, um, don't like offering, um, uh, any type of modification to a contract outside of budget season, but all of these folks, uh, were with us, uh, through October 25th and, um, I really hope that, um, we keep, uh, the people who are dedicated, uh, time and service to our community, so, uh, I'm in support of it. And I hope that we can attract more folks that, that, uh, choose to, um, uh, work in public service as police officers in our community, uh, through this, so.
Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number 12?
Item number 12, authorization for the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all?
Madam Clerk, um, Counselor Glant, did you have a point of order or something?
Yes, I want to make a motion that we combine 12 through 19.
Uh, Madam Clerk, can you please give us your thoughts on, on this?
Sure, items 12 through 19 are, um, viewed as routine matters that are normally done at the start of the council year. Again, every two years in January, we're doing it now annually because of the staggered terms. So all of them are routine, uh, usually not controversial, no discussion from the council or the public, it's just really a matter of efficiency. All of them are similar in the sense that it would be the council designating their authority for items that are listed either in state law or city ordinances, such as signing off on liquor licenses or, uh, circus permits or bingo permits, um, designating their authority to city staff to do that, uh, just from a matter of efficiency for the public.
Uh, and it's my understanding that, uh, in previous years when this has come up, uh, you've recommended that we take them one by one, or am I not remembering correctly?
Uh, to be honest, I don't have any recollection when we're the other on that, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, I mean, I prefer we take items one by one, just, um, as they are in the agenda, but what is?
Mr. Mayor, I, I second Counselor Glant's motion to take these up as a, as a single unit.
Uh, thank you, um, we now have, uh, this motion on the floor, should there be discussion on this motion? Madam? Uh, yeah, Counselor Najin, yeah?
Just as a point of order, so it's discussion on the motion that's on the floor, it's not discussion on any of these items, okay, thank you.
Yes, uh, Counselor Harriman?
Thank you, so, um, could these potentially go on a consent agenda in a, in a future year, or, or do they have to be taken, um, as standalone or?
Sure, in future years, they can be a, a consent agenda, we couldn't put them on the consent agenda tonight because your rules define the consent agenda and the rules had to be adopted first, so it's kind of like a, a chicken and the egg, you know, item. But now that the rules are, uh, in the couns- in the policy manual without dates and timeframes and an ending date, we will be able to put these items on a consent agenda every January, your first meeting every January.
Understood, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Najin, did you have something?
Yeah, there, there is, uh, an item that I would like to comment on for agenda item number 15, so I'm wondering if we can pull that from the group? Still, we could still comment on it, okay. Perfect.
Uh, Madam Clerk, how, how would that work if we're considering these in one lump sum?
Sure, so I think?
Uh, I, I think, it, it's, sorry, go ahead.
I, I, I would view it as two separate items, Mr. Mayor, one is, do you want to do, have one motion, blanket motion to approve 12 through 19? Yes or no, and if that passes as yes, then the next motion would be to approve 12 through 19. I think the question before the body right now is, do you want to do them as a lump sum in one blanket motion or not, yes or no? If the body decides yes, then the next motion would be to approve 12 through 19, at which point you could have discussion on any one of those items, 15, as well as go to the cap- public for their input.
Uh, I see, okay, so at that point, we would just have public comment during the, uh, during that main motion and not, in essence, uh, pull something out of the agenda, okay. Uh, yeah, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Uh, did you want to go to the public on their opinion of?
Combining.
Looping them as a blanket or not?
Um, yeah, sure, do we, do we have thoughts on this?
Again, Matt Roy, word three, uh, thank you Counsel, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselor Glan- and I guess Counselor Chittam for finally granting my wish, I've been saying for years that these items should be either a consent agenda item, because they are routine and uncontroversial appointments of various members of city administration to act on behalf of the municipal officers, or better yet, just make it part of the code of ordinances, like I've been saying for years, but, anyway, thank you.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Uh, yes, now these, uh, how, how do you want to proceed here, Madam Clerk?
Sure, so then a motion could be made to approve items 12 through 19 together as a block.
Thank you, um, yes, have a motion.
Second that.
Counselor Chittam, seconded by Counselor Najin, discussion on these, uh, items. Yes, Counselor Najin.
Well, I have absolutely no problem with moving these forward as a slate, I would like to point out that, and I have no problem with the clerk, uh, issuing, uh, the, uh, poll permits, um, I would like to point out that, uh, all of our telephone polls, not all of them, but many of them are on our sidewalks, right? And so like, there needs to be a review process in which we make sure that they are ADA accessible, and also state law currently, uh, restricts any community of less than 40,000 people, so there's one city, uh, that is allowed, uh, to revoke a poll permit, um, uh, through, uh, uh, through a process of, um, uh, of public initiation. And so, um, it's just something to think about, uh, as we issue new poll permits, if we make sure that they are all ADA accessible and out of our sidewalks, possibly, uh, shortly after my death, there will no longer be, uh, telephone polls in the middle of our sidewalks, so. And I think it's super important just for, for accessibility, walkability, and, and, and also the, the quality of the, of, 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 the maintenance of our sidewalks, so.
Further comments, questions, uh, from the council, yes, Counselor Chittam?
How many more people do we need to be in that elite class of 40,000 or more?
Well, we need to build housing for that, but.
Uh, counselors, I, I encourage you to wait to be recognized, uh, further comments and questions from the council? Public comment on these, uh, slate of items? Back to the council. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Uh, I believe we're now up to item number 20.
Twenty? Item 20, order allowing notification of special city council meetings to be issued via electronic means. Requested action, order that the city council hereby authorize as the city administrator, deputy city administrator, city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to issue notifications of special meetings of the city council to the city councilors via electronic notification during the period January 7th, 2025 through January 6th, 2026.
So moved. Have a motion, please.
Second.
Counsel Chittam, seconded by Counselor Glant, discussion, public comment, back to the council, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number 21?
Item number 21, election of city council representative to the school committee for 2025. Requested action to receive the mayor's nomination of Counselor Harriman and to elect Counselor Harriman as a city council representative to the school committee, said term to expire January 6th, 2025.
Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Uh, Counselor Najin?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Chittam. Uh, Counsel Harriman, yes?
Thank you, uh, just wanted to thank the mayor for nominating me again for another year in this position. Um, I've, I've really enjoyed the previous year and, um, I would like to continue in it and, um, I think that the, that this, learning about, learning more about our education system has been really interesting and, um, made me even more passionate about public education than I was before.
I appreciate your service, Counselor. Uh, public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council? Uh, yes, Counselor Chittam?
I wonder if it'd be appropriate under this item for us to request that the, uh, representative on the school board, uh, school committee, not to the school committee, uh, give us a report, uh, each meeting under reports and updates as to what the latest is with the school committee. Some of us, uh, watch the school committee, others do not, so if, if you could, and I'm not sure it's appropriate, but I'm, I'm asking, thank you.
Further comments or questions? Madam, uh, yes, Counselor Najin?
Uh, I was just gonna say, it, it has been done in the past, um, so, uh, the counselor that represents, uh, the, uh, city council, uh, on the school committee, uh, has given, uh, the bi-weekly updates during the meetings, so.
Further comments or questions about my nomination? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number 22?
Item number 22, appointment of city council representatives to various boards and committees. Uh, you will see on the next page, uh, is the vote sheet, motion to approve the following appointments to, of the city council representatives to the various boards and committees.
May I have a motion, please?
Um, I move that the slate be, uh, carried over for the next calendar year from last calendar year.
Uh, do we have Counselor Chittam, seconded by Counselor Sol, just discussion on these counselors, yes, Counselor Najin?
So I've requested to be removed from the 911 committee, uh, because I cannot make those meetings any longer, um, and, um, I had emailed, uh, Counselor Harriman and I believe I had co- copied, uh, the 2008, it's just super, super, like, not possible for me at this moment. Um, I, I cannot change my work schedule, um, so I'm asking, I mean, I can be nominated, but I can't show up, so.
Do we, uh, was that the only committee, uh, Counselor Najin?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, do we have, um, since we're all here, do we have a taker for the 911 committee? From among the remaining counselors? Uh, yes, Counselor Chittam?
You said eight o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, it's 8:00 AM every third Thursday.
Once a month?
Once a month.
And how long do the meetings?
Either in Auburn or Lewiston, it's usually under an hour.
Under an hour?
Yeah.
Where do they meet?
Director Hall, rep- so, it's either at Auburn City Hall or Lewiston City Hall, because it's a joint committee.
Oh, flip-flops?
Yeah, flip-flops, yeah. And Director Roy is the treasurer.
Woo-hoo! Okay. And, acting Administrator O'Malley, are you on the 911 committee as well?
I used to be, um, when I was police chief, but I'm not, so it would be our fire chief, our police chief and one of you, or you if you take it.
One of, one of you, one of you. So basically, it's, it's 12 hours a meeting, 24 hours a year of work time.
Uh, I would say even under that, the Director Hall has it pretty much under control and, and all of the chiefs from all the departments, uh, for Lewiston and Auburn, as well as a representative from Lisbon who, uh, is, buys into our service, are there, so, it's.
Could you share, does somebody share a little bit about what the, the purpose of the counselor representative on the 911 committee is? What's, what's the function of the counselor on that committee?
I, I think it's oversaid.
We actually have a member of the public that's on there, um, you weigh in on budget, uh, items and just, you know, what services they're gonna provide. In years past, we had a service called Code Red, um, which would notify folks about landlines and nobody has a landline anymore, so there's different things like that. You get updated on, um, the, any policy changes that the, um, 911 dispatch center, they're, they're a CLIA certified, um, agency. I think they may have stopped funding that, but there's things like that that you would weigh in on.
I know, like, earlier this year, there was a lot of concern about United Ambulance and the dispatching, uh, is this a topic that the 911 committee would discuss or, or entertain?
I think at the time, um, when, when the discussion with UAS, it was brought up to, um, Director Hall and, you know, it was, how many calls would they expect that they'd have to hire more bodies, and we did the, excuse me, we did this last budget, um, season where they were looking for additional positions just to handle the calls they currently get, um, and they didn't, they didn't get that funding. I think it would give you a better appreciation of what the 911 dispatch center deals with when you hear the stories our police officers say and firefighters number of calls that they go to, these are the folks that people are calling into. So you, you, it's really, you've kind of, you, you get to hear from our police and our fire chiefs from both sides of the river in terms of the challenges that they're facing and you kind of get a better understanding of what they're dealing with.
Thank you, sir. Um, I, I will put my name down for 911 committee.
Uh, Madam Clerk, please note that we have a taker for this committee.
Thank you very much, Counselor Chittam, and it is, uh, a super important committee, so.
Uh, counselors, do we have any, uh, further concerns about these assignments? Public comment on this, uh, agenda item? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, you've notated the change.
We have, yes, thank you.
Excellent, please call the vote.
Counsel from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five? Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of seven to zero.
Item number 23?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm a little confused here, but I think at this point is when the council president makes appointments to the Finance Committee.
The council president could announce appointments to the Finance Committee if they have them available, yes.
All right. Currently, Counselor Glant and I serve on the Finance Committee. I'm willing to continue in that, Counselor Glant. Then unless somebody wants to duke it out with me over this assignment, then I appoint Counselor Chittam and Counselor Glant to the Finance Committee for calendar 2026.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chittam. Madam Clerk, can you please continue with item number 23?
Sure. Item number 23, appointments to various city boards and committees. There are two items. The first item is to receive the mayor's appointments to various city boards and committees. No council action is required.
If you could read them, I would be deeply appreciative.
Sure. The mayor earlier today has appointed to the CDBG Committee Shariki Abdrham as the immigrant representative to the committee, Billy Jane Cook as a representative of the Census Track 201 through 204, and Pauline Gudis as a resident at large. To the Complete Streets Committee, the mayor has appointed Ted Walworth to the Historic Preservation Review Board, Margaret Craven, Mark Lee, and James Weber as an associate, and to the Library Board, Karen Schot, Mariah Pfeiffer, and Strawberry Pinkum.
And now, item number two?
Item number two, to approve the mayor's nominations regarding his appointments to the Housing Committee, Lewiston, Auburn Water, Clean Water Authority Board, and Planning Board. Council vote is required, and you can see the next sheet in your book.
So moved.
Second? One second, counselors, if I may. Madam Clerk, should we be voting on these appointments one person at a time, or can we vote on all of them at once?
It's really at the pleasure of the council. You can certainly vote on them all at once as a block, if you'd like.
What would like?
I will move that we vote on them as a block.
Do we have a second for that? Counselor Chittam, followed by Counselor Najin. Discussion, public, oh, yes, yes. Counselor Chittam?
Yes. Were there other applicants for these positions, or did we get a one-for-one correspondence between applicants in need?
There were other applicants. However, these are my nominations.
I'm pleased to see three Planning Board members are returning, so I'm happy about that. Thank you.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. Yes, I also want to thank those members who have served and are reapplying. I see several returning members of committees here, and I just want to thank them for their time serving their city.
Public comment for this agenda item? We're heading to public comment right now. We're coming back to the council. Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council. Counselor Najin?
I don't know. Thanks.
Oh, okay. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.